Council heading to the wall for presentations.
The time is 6:31.
Testing, testing. There we go. All right, our first proclamation is for Jewish American Heritage Month. If anyone... Oh, that's ready. That's right. Hold on that. Change here. We're going to do a commendation for the fire department, so if we can invite Matt McCormick. Let's see, Spencer Henry and Tim Sullivan. And is Davis' family here by any chance? Oh, great. Come on up, please. Thank you. Great. Whereas on January 18th, 2025, Captain Tim Sullivan, Engineer Spencer Henry, and Firefighter Matt McCormick of the Culver City Fire Department responded to a carbon monoxide alarm at a residential unit on the third floor of an apartment building. Whereas upon arrival, they detected low levels of carbon monoxide but were unable to immediately determine the source of the readings. While many would have considered the situation resolved based on these limited readings, these firefighters exhibited remarkable foresight and professional dedication by deciding to conduct an additional search on the fourth floor. And whereas during their investigation, Captain Sullivan, Engineer Henry, and Fighter-Fire McCormick discovered three unconscious victims suffering from severe carbon monoxide poisoning. And whereas, the environment was already dangerously saturated with the toxic gas, putting the lives of everyone in the building at imminent risk. And whereas, despite the lethal conditions, these firefighters demonstrated unparalleled bravery as they carried each victim to safety. Ensuring their survival in atmosphere were the dangerous, both immediate and life-threatening. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City hereby commends Captain Tim Sullivan, Engineer Spencer Henry, and Firefighter Matt McCormick for their courageous and commitment, courageousness and commitment to ensuring the safety and well-being of the community dated this 12th day of May 2025. Signed by the mayor and all council members. Would the officers and then the family like to say something? Would, hey, I'm learning things every day. Would the officers and then the family like to say a few words?
Well, I just wanted to thank you guys again. Me and my family wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for your guys coming in and rescuing us. And from the bottom of our hearts, we want to say thank you again. Your commitment to us and this community is fabulous. I'm just thankful to be here and like to thank all the council members for making this happen and to say thank you again. We wouldn't be here right now if it wasn't for you guys. Thank you.
I don't really have anything prepared, really, but it's a group effort. It wasn't just us three, as you probably know. But, you know, I'd like to thank all the crews that were there that night. Our chief, assistant chief, fire chief. We train on stuff like this all the time, not necessarily that specific incident, but for mass casual situations. So it's kind of, was fresh in our brains a little bit, but, you know, like, like they said, we did the best we could. You know, it was emergent. We were, it was all of our faces when we saw you three were, this is not good. So we did the best we could. We got you out into the safe area. Hope your back's okay. But anyways, thank you, everyone. Thank you for the help on the call. And I'm just glad it all turned out for the best. You know, everybody was safe and we all did a good job.
Real quick, I just wanted to add that how proud I am of Tim and Spencer and Matt. They're an example of our entire department and what we're about and our commitment to the community to provide public safety. And I know we're recognizing the three here, but like Tim said, we should recognize all the firefighters because they're here to protect you. Thank you.
Test, test. Test, test.
Hello? There we go. Jim Lamb, which one of you coming up? Jim and I have known each other for a minute. City of Culver City, Commendation 2025 Senior of the Year, Jim Lamb. Whereas the City of Culver City is recognizing Jim Lamb as 2025 Senior of the Year for his outstanding contributions to the Culver City community. And whereas, Jim Lamb is a Culver City nonprofit leader, urban and wetlands ecology educator, architect, planner, and former Culver City Planning Commission Chair, Arts Committee Member, and Historic Preservation Advisory Committee Member. And whereas, Jim Lamb is President Emeritus and Advisory Council Member at Biona Creek Renaissance and a dedicated environmentalist. And whereas, Jim Lamb is a former adjunct instructor at Antioch University, Los Angeles, where he has taught both urban and wetlands ecology. And whereas, Jim Lamb co-founded and participated in the Biona Creek Watershed Task Force and Assembly District 47's Environmental Cabinet. And whereas, Jim Lamb serves as an elder deacon and choir member at St. John's Presbyterian Church. And whereas, Jim Lamb with his wife Kathy served as Peace Corps Office, served as a Peace Corps volunteer for two years in Iran and an architect, and then continued his architectural career in the Culver City and Los Angeles areas. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City hereby commends Jim Lamb as 2025 Senior of the Year for his amazing contributions to the City of Culver City. We are grateful for his selfless dedication towards serving our community. Dated this 12th day of May 2025. Signed by myself and all the council members. Thanks, Jim.
I just want to, yeah. I see some folks that are standing up here that are a big part of why I'm here. And I want to thank Deborah Gregory, the President of Bionic Creek Renaissance, for nominating me. And all these other wonderful people who I've worked with for so many years. And just they've been an inspiration to me. And part of that, too, has been working with the youth in our community. And sometimes we're up here before you, before the city council, actually, with Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts and, and members of our Bionic Creek Renaissance Club at the high school, Culver City High School, to shout, you know, advocate for various issues relating to pollution and plastic and all that stuff. But a couple of fond memories I have are was being asked to be an Eagle Scout advisor for Evan De Ma and working with him. I was so inspired by this guy, teenager at Culver City High School, who kind of reorganized our creek cleanups in a big way and really got the students involved. And ever since then, that club at the high school, the president or the co-presidents have been voting members of Bionic Creek Renaissance. So it's been really inspiring. And so, and also, I'm gonna do, let's see, I shouldn't go on further because I'm beginning to forget names, but I also had opportunity to work with other youth as well. And that's just a big part of my joy and all this kind of stuff that I've been involved in. So thank you very much, everybody, and continuing to serve you, hopefully. But I'll be leaving soon because Kathy and I have another meeting to attend tonight. So that's why you don't see us here at council meetings. Regularly conflict, but thank you.
Jim Lamb, congratulations. Well deserved. You put a lot into this community and a lot into Bionic Creek Renaissance. You were the face of Bionic Creek Renaissance for 15-plus years. And this is a small gesture relative to what you've done, but I hope you appreciate this. I know you do. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. All right, next is Nurses Week, May 6 through 12. All right. Come on down. Whereas Nurses Week is celebrated worldwide to recognize and honor the contribution of nurses to health care and society, as well as the critical role nurses play in improving patient health, promoting health, and advocating for better health care and systems. And whereas, the 2025 theme of National Nurses Week is the Power of Nurses, which allows us to reflect on the contributions of nurses across various communities, including Culver City, and the real-life challenges they face every day. And whereas, nurses in Culver City have a profound impact on both individual and community health and are often the first point of contact for medical care in the hospital. And whereas, nurses are deeply embedded in the fabric of Culver City, both as health care professionals and as community members, leaving an impact on public health, community support, and emergency response. And whereas, they serve not only as caregivers, but also as advocates for improved health care infrastructure in the area. And whereas, nurses also play a vital role in the community's understanding of health issues and prevention, shaping the overall well-being of Culver City residents. Through local events, educational campaigns, and collaborations between healthcare institution and community organization, the ongoing relationship between nurses and the city is illuminated. And whereas, through Nurses Week, Culver City can come together to honor and celebrate these relationships, acknowledging the nursing profession's integral role in maintaining and enhancing public health. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Culver City, City Council hereby proclaims May 6 through 12, 2025, as Nurses Week in Culver City, and encourages all residents to celebrate and highlight not only the accomplishments of its nurses, but also the ways in which these health care heroes continue to positively shape the community, whether it's through these milestones, years of service, or their day-to-day contributions to health care in the city. Dated this 12th day of May 2025. Signed by the mayor and all the council members.
If you don't mind, real quick, I don't have flowers for everybody, but for Marie and her staff, I'd just like to say, we at the fire department are so grateful for all the help we get from them. Every day we're over at the hospital taking patients there. And not only that, Marie and her staff is so involved in everything that we do. So we just want to say thank you very much to her and her staff. So you can share these, Marie, but those are for you. And then hiding in the background here, you know, the chief and I wear the gold badges and people think we're in charge of the fire department, but the glue that keeps us all together is our staff. And one of the great members of our staff is Adrian, our nurse educator. I know she's hiding back here and she's all embarrassed, but this is for her. Thank you, Adrian.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to say thank you very much to the city council for proclaiming this week for us. I think, you know, as nurses, there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes. And I was really proud to be able to share some of our team members here, especially our frontline staff who do it every day, 24/7. So really appreciate all the work that they do. We, you know, take care of the most vulnerable, you know, at the times where their lives where they need it the most. So I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. I'm really proud to stand beside you. Thank you.
Okay, this time we actually are doing Jewish American Heritage Month, if I can find it. There it is. So anyone who wants to celebrate can come to the front. All the mishbacha. All right. All righty. Whereas on April 20, 2006, the federal government proclaimed May a Jewish American Heritage Month, starting, stating, "As a nation of immigrants, the United States is better and stronger because Jewish people from all over the world have chosen to become American citizens," end quote. "And since then, proclamations in support of Jewish American Heritage Month have been made by presidents of the United States annually. And whereas, generations of Jewish people have fled to the United States in search of a better life for themselves and their families. And these immigrants made invaluable contributions in support of equality and civil rights through their leadership and achievements. And whereas, Jewish Americans connect to their Jewish identity in a variety of ways, such as culturally, ethnically, religiously, and by following Jewish ethics and values. And whereas, in recent years, Jewish Americans have increasingly experienced antisemitism, including but not limited to physical attacks, vandalism, verbal and physical harassment, and hateful comments posted on social media. And whereas, Culver City shares an obligation to condemn and combat antisemitism wherever it exists, to include Jewish Americans in all facets of civic life, and to stand with the Jewish American community against hatred or bigotry in our city and count, and country. And whereas, we all desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City, California hereby proclaim May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month, and calls upon all residents to celebrate the rich and diverse heritage of the Jewish American community, including those who live, work, and play in Culver City, playing a vital role in contributing to all aspects of life in Culver, and honors the generations of residents and immigrants who have enriched our nation's narrative. Dated this 12th day of May 2025." Who, who would like to be the lucky one? Yes? Would you like to hold it? There you go. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Well, thank you very much for this opportunity and for proclaiming May as a Jewish American Heritage Month. It's been exactly 10, 100 years since the incorporation of Culver City, that we established Chabad of Culver City. So 2017, 100 years since the incorporation. We opened our doors and Culver City has been an incredible home for Jewish life, where everyone can freely practice their religion in any way they want. And one of the most exciting moments, getting together for the annual Hanukkah celebration, where hundreds get together and each one proudly allowed to experience their religion and celebrate the light. So thank you to our wonderful city council members for always making sure everything is taken care of on all levels. And God bless you all.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rabbi Friedman. I'm from Temple Akiba of Culver City, along with a few of our other friends up here. And I am actually new to Culver City, so I just started my position back in July of 2024. But I am no stranger to Culver City. I have lived here for about 10 years now. And Culver City has always struck me as a special place. There's really no place like this city anywhere else in L.A. And as originally a Midwesterner, I feel like there's a sense of this communal, homey feeling that is created here. And I really do have to thank all of you for being a part of what creates the fabric that is Culver City. And that same fabric is what, I believe, has really helped to shape the Jewish life that is here. And it's, it has made it such a desirable place to both live, work, and be Jewish. And I'm really appreciative to all that you have done as a city to make that possible. And that includes protecting us physically and spiritually, and continuing to look out for the needs of all Jews, which is very diverse, as represented by this whole group up here. So please keep listening and deepening that relationship with us. And we, I look forward to continuing to get to know all of you as the years go on. So thank you all for all you do and for recognizing this as Jewish Heritage Month. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, we're now going to do a proclamation for Historic Preservation Month. I don't know if there's anyone here that'd like to come down? Yes, we can give a round of applause. You're more than welcome. All right, thank you for joining us. All right, whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, encouraging economic development, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas, historic preservation can be realized and celebrated on many levels, including referencing the history of a site through a development project, historic markers, walking tours, museum exhibits, archives, educational programs, and internships. And whereas, this year, Preservation Month focuses on harnessing the power of place, which recognizes the role preservationists play in protecting historic spaces while meeting the needs of communities for the present and the future. Preservation work strengthens communities, breathes new life into neighborhoods, supports a healthier planet, and builds a more just and connected society. And whereas, the Culver City Historic Society, excuse me, Historical Society, established in 1980, continues its mission of collecting, preserving, and exhibiting the history of Culver City and its environs through new partnerships to expand and diversify audiences and incorporate future generations into their work. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Culver City, California hereby proclaims May as Historic Preservation Month in our city and encourages all residents and visitors to rediscover, or discover, honor and share in the unique history of our beautiful Culver City. Dated this 12th day of May, signed by the mayor, vice mayor, and all council members. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Hello? Okay. Thank you very much to Mayor O'Brien and the entire city council for this fantastic award. We at the Culver City Historical Society have been working very hard alongside of our city historian, Hope Parrish, right there. Big round of applause for Hope. To maintain and to celebrate the history of the City of Culver City. For those of you who don't know where we are, we are located in Vets Park, that big tall tower down the street. Come and see us first and third Sundays from 12 to 3. Our museum is open and free. We also do programs four times a year. Our programs are wonderful. In the evenings, 7 o'clock in the evenings, the fourth Tuesday, right, fourth Tuesday, very good, four times a year. So yeah, thank you very much to city council. We appreciate this wonderful award. Thank you so much.
Noel, did you, Noel? Does she have something to say? Noel?
Hello? Last one. Older Americans Month. Can we get representatives? Anyone who identifies as an older American, come up. And those who support.
Mayor, Mayor, before we begin, actually Noel Warner had a little spiel she wanted to say regarding historic preservation.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Noel Warner, and I'm an Ambassador Girl Scout from Troop 15935. I'm currently working on my Gold Award with a focus on our city's history. In the spirit of celebrating Historic Preservation Month, I'd like to share a draft of the Historic Walking Tour created in partnership with the Culver City Historical Society and City historian Hope Parrish that highlights 14 sites in downtown Culver City and serves as a self-guided resource for residents and visitors. It starts at the Culver City Hotel, spans to the Colonnade on Washington, and ends in Media Park. The objective of this tour is to bring awareness to the historic importance and continued use of sites through downtown Culver City. In addition to this pamphlet, my project will also include social media posts and a few in-person tours. I want to thank Hope Parrish and Jack Balmarito for helping me with this project. Your time and wisdom have been much appreciated. I'm excited to start leading guided tours soon. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay. By the way, I was in the senior center this afternoon and it was packed. There was not a single parking space available, and the entire place was filled. It was great. City of Culver City proclamation, Older Americans Month 2025. Whereas the month of May is recognized throughout the United States as Older Americans Month, and the theme of this year's celebration is Flip the Script on Aging. And whereas Flip the Script on Aging offers an opportunity to transform how society perceives and approaches aging by challenging stereotypes, dispelling misconceptions, and honoring older adults' contributions. And whereas the City of Culver City Parks Recreation and Community Services, otherwise known as PRCS Department, staff work collaboratively with the Culver City Senior Citizens Association, nonprofit partners, and others to build community and facilitate opportunities that empower older adults. And whereas PRCS and the CCSCA partner each day to provide diverse, inclusive, fun, and meaningful programming and events at the Culver City Senior Center and beyond that support staying active and engaged as we age. And whereas Culver City recognizes that communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate, and Culver City is proud to be designated as an AARP age-friendly community. And whereas Culver City celebrates Older Americans Month and invites its residents to join us in recognizing the contributions of our older citizens and promoting programs and activities that foster dignity, positivity, and connection as we flip the script on aging. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City, California, hereby proclaims May 2025 as Older Americans Month dated this 12th day of May 2025, signed by myself, the Vice Mayor, and all the Council members.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, hi, everyone. My name is Jill Thompson. I'm the Recreation and Community Services Supervisor in charge of the Senior Center. And as Mayor O'Brien said, we are 3,000-plus member-strong at the Senior Center. If you've never stopped in, please do. We're happy to have you. We have all sorts of exciting and fun programming. I really want to thank the amazing PRCS staff that work at the Senior Center every day, along with our amazing CCSCA volunteer board, who help us to have so many diverse and inclusive programs at the Senior Center. And thank you to all of the other city departments that we also work with on a daily basis as well. So thank you all very much.
Get another one? All right. We'll get a couple here. Try to squeeze everybody in. Perfect. Ready, three, two, one. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Could everyone please rise for the pledge? Okay, may I get started and read our oral statement of land acknowledgement? The City of Culver City formally acknowledges that the land we inhabit today is the ancestral land of indigenous peoples who have lived here for millennia. The City of Culver City honors the Gabrielino people, past, present, and future, and recognizes their enduring connection to this land as its original caretakers. We are committed to supporting and uplifting the Gabrielino people and to fostering a deeper understanding of the histories and identities of all indigenous peoples in this region. We encourage all residents and visitors to join us in respecting and caring for this land. The City affirms its support for the rights of these indigenous communities and for the preservation of their cultural legacies. And we actually do have a brief report on action taken in closed session, and the City Attorney will take that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So there is one item to report out. In CS2, the City Council gave the City Attorney direction to initiate or intervene in litigation. Once litigation is formally commenced, the particulars shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry in accordance with the Brown Act unless doing so would jeopardize either the city's ability to serve a party or the city's ability to conclude settlement negotiations. So that concludes my report out of closed session.
Thank you. And do we have any other reports from staff or committees, commissions, or boards? Okay, great. Let's start with Councilmember updates and comments. Councilmember Fish?
None for me today, thank you.
Councilmember Morgan?
Thank you. I want to share a statement in solidarity with my working family party colleagues. I want to uplift that ICE Asians targeted Newark Mayor Raz Baraka and threw him in jail on May 9th while he was doing his job. As a sitting mayor in America, this is outrageous. And I'll just plainly state that Trump fears our unity, Black, Latino, Indigenous, Asian-American, and Pacific Islander, white, working class, but solidarity wins every single time. I'm originally from New Jersey and went to law school in Newark. I served as mayor of this city last year. And fascism is a far-right political ideology and movement characterized by dictatorial leadership, ultra-nationalism, and a centralized state that prioritizes the nation over individual rights and freedoms, and it is often associated with militarism, suppression of dissent, and a belief in natural social hierarchy. It is here, I could be next, you could be next, and enough is truly enough. So I felt it was really important to lift that up tonight. And in addition to the six recognitions that were given, I also want to uplift the fact that May is also the beginning of Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And so we just want to take the time to celebrate and learn the history and the contributions of our AAPI community here in Culver City and beyond. And I know last time we met, we talked about May being Mental Health Awareness Month, but this theme and every story, their strength, it's just always important to uplift and normalize and stopping the stigma. So very grateful to our mobile crisis team and all who work in the mental health field to support our community. I also want to uplift that May is recognized as National Foster Care Awareness Month. And with that, that's a nationwide effort to raise awareness and support for foster youth, and there are about 15,000 foster youth right here in L.A. County, 60,000 or so in the state. And this month is dedicated to recognizing the needs of foster youth and celebrating the dedication of foster parents, social workers, and advocates. And I encourage the public to support policies and initiatives that improve the well-being of all children in foster care. I also want to just give a quick plug that folks check out our community calendar. If you go to culvercity.org, there's a lot of events that are coming up. I did want to just flag, and I don't have the flyer handy, which is regrettable, but our PRCS staff is doing a fantastic Teen Mental Health Week, and our PRCS director, Ted Stevens, just shared a photo from the event today, and it was a packed house. We know that there is a crisis of mental health, particularly with our young folks. I'm really, really grateful that our Parks Team is meeting our young folks where they are and providing resources and support. So if you have a teenager in your life, please flag that there are events all week happening, I believe, at the teen center, so please plug in there. And I also want to uplift that we are returning the Housing and Homelessness Standing Committee, and we'll be meeting this Wednesday at 4:00 p.m. I don't think we'll have hybrid capabilities right now, but hopefully that will be coming online in the future. And to close out, I just want to extend sincere condolences to the family of Tyree Nichols. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing from Councilmember Vera. Vice Mayor Prusa?
Yeah, thank you. I was able to attend the Taste of Culver City. Congratulations to the organizers. It was another successful event. There were performances, a silent auction, and a lot of delicious food and drink. It was organized by the Culver City Education Foundation. In honor of Older Adults Month, Westside Pacific Villages held its inaugural Spring Soray. The organization helps empower older adults to stay socially connected, active, and independent so they can age successfully in their own homes. The organization is part of the Age Friendly Initiative Task Force that the city is organizing, and we're grateful for their service and partnership. This weekend, Achievable Health is hosting their annual gala. They recently expanded their location, which will allow them to serve three times as many people. The mission of Achievable Health is to serve people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Last but not least, Happy Mother's Day to all mothers, godmothers, and mother figures. Hope you enjoyed a magical day. In 2024, the U.S. Department of Labor released data that 74% of moms with children under 18 are working in the labor force, and beyond that, moms are performing the unpaid work of caring for their children, completing household chores, and volunteering in the wider community. And there are many things we can do to support mothers and all caregivers so they can thrive at home and at work, including improving our care infrastructure, access to affordable childcare, free and universal pre-care, and adequate paid family leave and medical leave, and ensuring quality jobs with families sustaining wages. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Also, shout out for Taste of Culver City, held by the Ed Foundation. It was wonderful, huge success. I know that they did really well with their fundraising. Also, definitely want to applaud our staff and especially the Exchange Club for putting on an incredible Culver City Car Show. It was the 21st annual. Police, fire, all did a great job. Fire Department also had their pancake breakfast, which was a fundraiser for them, and that was great. It was a great community event. And also wanted to thank Scout Troops 15, 108, and 113 for leading the flag ceremony there. And then last Thursday, I attended and announced the Nonprofit of the Year at the Vinda Museum, co-sponsored by the Vinda and Amark Foundation. It's their nonprofit convening. They do that once a year, invite nonprofits in Culver City to learn about, you know, how to be a more effective fundraiser, more effective nonprofit. And that was a great thing to award to Grace Steiner and Lisa Skelly, who's the director there, gave a presentation on that. And I have to also say, at that time, Amark Foundation has funded the purchase of a bunch of these hats that says Culver City. And with them, I am announcing a program where the only way you can get these is to volunteer at least 20 hours in Culver City. I will announce, you can email me, or I will have it announced on social media how to submit your hours, but it's a great way of showing Culver City pride and also helping the community. And all you have to do is volunteer. You cannot buy them. So excited to announce that. Thank you. And now, we've got joint public comment.
We currently have 17 people signed up to speak.
Okay.
Now go ahead and read our statement on hate speech. Members of the public have a right to speak on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. However, this council strongly denounces hate speech and does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Culver City prides itself on its diverse community and inclusion of all persons. We are committed to creating a safe space in the city and in these chambers where members of our community feel included and respected.
So I will call the first five people so they know who is in line. The first five are going to be Maria Beg, Emily Dee, Mariah Fontinge, Jeff Schwartz, and Leah Pressman. First person is Maria Beg. Is Maria Beg in the house?
I don't see her.
I don't see her online. Next person would be Emily Dee.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emily, but I am reading this on behalf of my friend Alice, and I'm reading her words because she is a Culver City resident against the proposed resolution. This resolution is not about peace. It's about avoiding a ceasefire call. It's not about using funds wisely. It's about wanting to stop hearing about Gaza in council meetings. So this council already set two explicit stances on international conflicts, and now they propose those conversations happen at the federal level because of their cowardice. This council would rather go down in history via their October 23 resolution standing in solidarity with genocide than call for a ceasefire. Children are going blind because of malnutrition. They're dying. There's no clean water. Have you ever heard away the child screams from an amputation with no anesthesia? When the victims are Israeli or Ukrainian, international resolutions can be drawn up in a snap. This council would rather prioritize the feelings of a few Zionists than say that the maiming and killing of innocent children should stop because those children are what? Palestinian? That's why we don't deserve better? This resolution is not about supporting human rights. It's racism. It's utter hypocrisy. Be on the right side of history, agendize a ceasefire, and vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
City Clerk, can you remind that these are items not on the agenda?
So we're currently on items not on the agenda. A3 would be the proper item to talk about the resolution. Our next speaker is Mariah Fontinge.
Hello, Honorable Counsel. Israel, with the full backing of the U.S., has blocked all humanitarian aid from entering Gaza since March 2nd. That was 72 days ago. In that time, we have watched helplessly- In that time, we have watched helplessly as 2 million people, half of them children, are starved in tents while bombs rain overhead. Most Gazans now survive on one meal every two or three days. Children who escape airstrikes are dying slowly from malnutrition and dehydration. We've all seen the images. The horror is real, and it is happening in front of us. As your constituent, I'm asking you to say what any moral person should. This is not okay. On October 23rd, this council passed a resolution condemning the October 7 attacks. So why can't you say the same for the children of Gaza? Is it because they're poor, or because they are Arab or Muslim, or because they have no political power? Your silence is speaking volumes. You won't even allow a ceasefire resolution to be discussed. That refusal makes it clear whose lives this council values with its time, effort, and resources, and whose lives it doesn't. Even if a resolution is only symbolic, it symbolizes what you stand for in Culver City. Culver City Residents for Peace demand that you stand for all your constituents, not just the ones you find more convenient to support. Every day you delay, more children die. How does the world allow genocide to happen? Just like this. Thank you.
I'm here tonight to discuss the proposition that Vice Mayor Puzza and former Mayor McMorn should not vote on the Fox Hills specific plan because they're Fox Hills residents. Thousands of people live in Fox Hills, and Puzza and McMorn are the first two Fox Hills residents to serve on the council. Fox Hills lacked representation for decades, and now its elected officials are being silenced. Note that Fox Hills has more renters and more people of color than other parts of our city, and that Fox Hills residents were excluded from the Culver schools when it was first annexed. These are not coincidences. Note also that Mr. Vera has never been prevented from voting on items affecting the police, even though his daughter is a cop, nor has he been barred from diluting regulations and taxes that affect his numerous inherited properties and businesses. At the height of the COVID pandemic, on April 10, 2021, he was allowed to vote against hero pay for grocery workers despite having inherited Sorrento Market. At the July 10, 2023 council meeting, he attempted to shut down the city's housing registry while having not registered any of his inherited rental properties and was only stopped because Stephen Jones and I spoke out. The city attorney did not recognize a conflict of interest in these situations. Mr. O'Brien has never hesitated to vote on matters affecting Michael Hackman's properties, such as the Culver Studios and Culver Steps, even though Hackman personally spent over $600,000 to elect him. The city attorney has also been mute on this. Her office has consistently applied impossible standards to progressives while covering for conservatives. I do not believe this is a mustache-twirling conspiracy, just people doing what they think is normal, but that's the definition of implicit bias. It's also the definition of ideology. The worldview of the dominant class is invisible because it passes for common sense, like water to the fish. Please do better.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
The next five people will be Hwang Nyim Elabek, Art Numura, Dorothy Sad, Ronald Davis, and Sebastian Kornick. So first up, Hwang Nyim Elabek.
Good evening, council members and community members. My name is Hwang Nyim. I'm here to recognize May as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the resilience, history, and contributions of the AA and HPI communities. I have always seen this month as a celebration, but this year marks the 50th anniversary of the fall of Saigon. It is a fact, a somber memory for many global Vietnamese who lost their country, where over 3 million Vietnamese were killed, including 50,000 U.S. soldiers. If you're to watch CNN or network news, however, you'd hear it as Liberation Day or Reunification Day, a day of victory and poppin' circumstance. It's a difficult narrative for a Vietnamese refugee to experience this. There's no mention of over 200,000 Vietnamese that were sent to education camps. But we are here in May, and in Los Angeles, we can celebrate the Asian American contribution as laborers who built the railroads, who worked the farmlands, to the garment workers, domestic workers who have kept our economy running. AA and HPI communities have played a vital role in shaping this area. We honor icons like labor organizers like Larry Itlong, Yuri Kuchiyama, and Grace Lee Boggs, a lifelong activist for racial justice. I attended an Asian Gala for Local Heroes just last week, and in solidarity, we recognize a Native American cultural leader. And so, as Asian groups stand in solidarity with other groups who have experienced hardship in America, here I stand. We cannot ignore the moment we are in, as in this month, to hold space for pain and urgency of the humanitarian crisis in Gaza. Many AA and HPI communities, especially those with histories of colonialism, war, and displacement, know what it means to endure violence and injustice. This month reminds us that the cultural recognition must go hand-in-hand with the commitments of justice both locally and globally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Art Numura.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and esteemed council members. My name is Art Numura. I have been a resident of Culver City for 27 years and have been riding a bicycle since I was seven, maintaining this joy ever since. In 1952, during my youth, the world population stood at 2.6 billion people. Over the last 73 years, this figure has shifted dramatically, growing 3.25 times to 8.2 billion people. Now, 8.2 billion people inhabit the planet that has not changed in size, grappling with climate change, the swift rise of authoritarian governance, and numerous other challenges. Regardless of our feelings, we are the guardians of our planet. After all these years, biking still brings me joy, but now it also serves a significant collective purpose. By biking, walking, and utilizing public transportation, I contribute to reducing pollution, alleviating congestion, and minimizing stress in both my life and the lives of others. I am grateful for this opportunity to enjoy these activities and to embrace the joy of a car-free lifestyle. I want to thank you, and I also want to wish you a very happy National Bike Month. Thanks. Bye.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm a bicyclist, and I have a really simple minute tonight to talk about bicycling. And to thank you for the opportunity to volunteer with BPAC, which was fantastic. I found it fascinating over the last two years. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of my bike routes for National Bike to Work Month and tell you the status of them. So twice a week, I bike to the Carthay School, where I'm a reading tutor, and I bike down the phenomenal Crescent Heights Bike Path. It's great. I bike to the L.A. Athletic Club on the Expo Bike Lane, which is spectacular, bike lane all the way to downtown. And then I bike to the Santa Monica Medical Offices. I'm getting older. Phenomenal Expo Bike Lane, which is great. And I use Bayona Creek a lot. It's a little bit rough. The Higera entrance is great, but we're really lucky to have it. So then the only biking experience I've had, which has been really rough, is my last big executive job, which was over on Uplander Way. I was one of three C-suite executives, and I biked to work every day. And I put my bike in the very front of the office, trying to encourage everyone else to bike with me. And instead of joining me, they asked me to put a living well in my bike bag. And so I am so thrilled that you are working on Overland and Hanum, and I hope that continues. And again, thank you so much for the opportunity to work on BPAC. It was great, and I just love your subcommittee structure. So hopefully I can volunteer again in the future, but thanks again for that, and I look forward to biking down Hanum, Overland and Hanum in the future. Thanks.
Ronald Davis.
I want to address several issues that I would like the city council to consider lifting its voice in strong condemnation of. The Los Angeles Times ran a story this morning, reporting on the hundreds of student protesters arrested at UCLA and USC last year, and the ongoing activity by young people throughout the Los Angeles area, including Culver City, who are standing and protesting against fascism and genocide, some of them including hunger strikes. I think for our city to remain silent while our student protesters are being denied their free speech, even though very few of them were actually charged or the charges were dropped, but nevertheless, responsible city leaders should do something about this. I would suggest maybe we have a city forum, an open city forum, before the city council in which some of the student protesters could come and explain who they are, what they did, and why they did it. I think that would be a responsible leadership on the part of the city council. Secondly, The L.A. Times also reported today about the growing anti-transgender hysteria fueled by hate and politics, including our own California governor. This attempt to demean people for defending their transgender rights is like the dehumanization that daily occurs against the Palestinian people by Israeli government. Neither transgender people nor the people of Palestine are freaks, and I think the city council should consider holding an open forum in which you could discuss the issue of transgender hatred as part of your campaign against hatred. All right. Thank you very much.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Sebastian Kornick.
Good evening, dear Mayor, City Council. John, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to speak on behalf of Café Vida, 33 Taps, Saqy House, Meet in Paris, Nardo Italian, S&amp;W Country Diners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Sebastian Kornick, and I own Meet in Paris. We're here today to respectfully express our concern and opposition to the recent waste collection cost increase imposed under SB 1383 compliance, as outlined in the notice from the Environmental Program and Operation Division. While we fully support California's sustainability goals and the intent of SB 1383 to reduce landfill waste, the abrupt shift in cost structure, raising our monthly total to nearly $930 a month, represents a significant financial burden on small businesses like ours. It specifically has trash $759, recycling $80, and organics $90. This adjustment appears to have been triggered by an audit determining that we were undercharged by an old compactor rate. However, we were never informed about this discrepancy prior to the charge, nor were we given a phase-in period or options for scaling the service for better fit our actual outputs. We ask the council and the Public Works Department to consider the following. Implement a sliding scale or subsidy for small, longstanding local businesses being hit hardest. Two, provide detailed volume data that justifies these charges along with a reassessment of actual waste levels, including possible shared bins with neighboring businesses.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Sorry.
Do you have just a little bit more?
Just a little bit more.
One more sentence?
Yes. We respect for your just city council to explore solutions and support SB 1383. Additionally, we formally request that the city council agendize a discussion on the trash collection fee structure, as it impacts small businesses like ours. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I was wondering if we can get three nodding heads, maybe send that to the staff and see if there's any way we could look into providing some relief for our small business owners, a sliding scale or something.
Yeah. I think we'd probably have to bring that before council, right?
The next five people are James Richardson, Mary DeVal, Mark Herskovitz, Ashvash Harari, Dakota O'Hara. Next up is James Richardson.
Hello, City Council, Alba Vera, Freddie Puzza, Dan Bryan, Bubba Fish. It's good to see you all one more time. I'm not going to be long here, because I want to stay to the end and hear what y'all have to say on certain action points. Just wanted to say I do echo many of the sentiments here that's being spoken in this courtroom, and I just want to go ahead and just, you know, if we can just think for five seconds, what does it mean to you when you hear the word "justice"? Again, what does it mean to you when you hear the word "peace"? I want to bring up an opportunity that, you know, I don't want to miss, and I wanted to see if we can start talking in the future about the Martin B. Redden Gun Building that's on Washington Street. I think it's a very pivotal place, since it's between two churches. It's a church and a mosque, and it's in the center of a whole lot of affordable housing. I want to bring that back up, if we can talk about that as a community. If I have to go ahead and lead on that, I want to know what we can do so we can actually provide real spaces, where we can talk about these issues, these interconnected issues beyond just race and poverty, and what's going on in government and between religion. I don't think we can just sit here and just complain in a courtroom and think that's going to move. I think we have to make a real tangible movement, and I think we can do it in Culver City. I don't think things are as bad as they seem. I think there's a lot of things we're not looking at. So that's all. Thanks.
Mr. Richardson, just so you know, we did have the Redden Gun Store on the agenda a few council meetings ago, and we put out an RFP for proposals.
Next up is Mary DeVal.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, and Happy Bike Month 2025. In September, we will celebrate the eighth birthday of Women on Bikes Culver City. We started with three women at a café in the Culver City Arts District, and now have well over 600 in our Facebook group, as well as an additional 100 on our email list. At that first meetup, we chose a name, and we made a plan. Things evolved. Until now, we have a consistent gathering place, which is in front of our very own city hall, and a consistent day and time, the first and third Monday of every month, meeting at 8:00 AM. These rides take us to places of historic, artistic, and political interest. We also experience, examine, and discuss various types of infrastructure. We have fun. We help each other. Our five goals have remained the same. One, support each other as women who choose to use bicycles for transportation, not only for recreation. Two, be a model of encouragement for other women who want to use their bicycles for transportation but transportation but don't know how to get started. Three, be visible in our community and at the same time, support small businesses. And that happens because we always have a refreshment stop. Four, share information with each other about safe and efficient routes around the area. Get to know our community better. And five, learn tips on safe urban cycling from other women. Our next ride will be Monday, May 19th. All women are welcome. Thank you.
Mark Hershkovitz.
Good evening. My name is Mark Hershkovitz, longtime Culver City resident and extremely concerned citizen. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the Jubalo Village project and the $16 million add to the city's budget. Let me see if I have this correct. The Culver City Methodist Church and Community Corps of Santa Monica, CCSM, wants to build a 97-unit, six-story, $90-plus-million-dollar low-income housing project that includes new facilities for the church. Culver City's already granted them $4 million to get this off the ground, but they've come way short in the funding they need, so Culver City is going to put all our eggs in one basket by giving them all 42 project-based HUD vouchers, preventing us from giving any other vouchers for the next 20 years. Wait, they're still short on funding, so they need Culver City to give them another $16-plus million, which is now on next month's Culver City budget. At the same time, Culver City has declared a fiscal emergency. It needs to add an emergency tax and spend $500,000 for a special mail-in ballot that we must pass to make us whole. Oh, and the church is set to receive $13.5 million in lease payments on this deal, just so you know. This is insane. What happens if they come up short? Is Culver City on the hook for that? And this project, which is being funded by Culver City tax dollars, has no provisions for Culver City residents or workers to get to live here. It's open for anyone in LA. I'm sorry. But wait, there's more. Let's add to the fact that our current vice mayor had a campaign manager who is, wait, what? The president of the church that we are funding. This is a massive, massive conflict of interest, church and state, et cetera. This is, this has gone beyond insane. I'm sorry, but I call for the immediate removal of the $16 million Jubalo Village item from Culver City's upcoming budget, and that Vice Mayor Puza recuse himself from all future voting on any Jubalo projects. Thank you.
Next up is Ashraf Harari. I don't see him online. Is he in the house? Next up is Dakota O'Hara.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dakota. I wanted to give a scenario to you today. Picture this. It's a beautiful spring day, first warm weekend of the year. You've biked Carlson Park with your friends, the birds are singing, kids are playing the harmonica and riding around on their scooters. And we set up for a beautiful slackline between two strong trees nearby. Others are lounging in the shade in their hammocks. It's beautiful. It's wonderful. But what's this? A city employee dressed in the red uniform of the Fun Police directs you to take down your slacklines and hammocks. The reason? You might get hurt and sue the city. This is my story. My day ruined. I biked home to research the statutes defining the rules surrounding usage of parks for recreational activities, both in the city of Culver City and California at large. The City of Culver City Municipal Code states the department may prohibit any recreational activity that is determined to be dangerous to participants or public safety. This sounds great for the city, but it's very vague and terrible for its citizenry. Who wears the crown? Who decides what is and is not allowed, and who carries the liability? This sounds like a tough question to answer, but the California Supreme Court has saved us from further argument. It's the willing participants in said activity that assume the risk of injury. This is supported by California Civil Code 831.7, Section A, which explicitly protects public entities and landowners from liability for injuries arising out of recreational activities on public or private lands, and is further supported by the 2000 California Supreme Court case Bjork v. Mason, which details the assumption of risk doctrine, protects landowners and personnel from liability when there is inherent risk for activities done for enjoyment or thrill that require physical exertion. Basically, there is no liability for the city unless there is proof of negligence in maintaining the land. And as a result, the city of Culver City must update its municipal code to reflect these Supreme Court rulings, particularly as it pertains to slacklining and hammocking, and work with these communities to implement common sense guidelines that allow citizens to pursue these activities and other activities. This is an extremely straightforward way for the city of Culver City to serve its citizens in the way they wish to be served and commit to fostering diverse, active communities in our public parks.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
The final three people are Ken Palmer, Erin McCarthy, and Kareem Sahali. Ken Palmer?
Good evening, Culver City Council. My name is Ken Palmer, resident of Culver City. I had this crazy idea that, like, people send in letters to you for, to read before these meetings. Now, I understand, you can hear people when they talk, but I don't know the questions or the information they're asking about or they're talking about. Are those letters that come to the council before the meetings, are those, could those somehow be available, just much like the videos are available of these meetings? Just to hear, just for, I don't know what information is getting to you or what other community members might be saying. That was just, that's just a request. And then, and then my other thoughts are regarding Jubalo Village. And I just, I know that when everyone ran for office, everybody has their thoughts and sort of, of course, affordable housing is on everyone's mind. And, but with this use of all the eggs in the basket, there won't be any council member that comes in after you for 20 years, 30 years, that will have funds or vouchers to help promote any of these affordable housing projects that are developing. Might I suggest that Culver City stick with helping these projects that are developing and not necessarily, and not throw everything into a property that is, that Culver City doesn't own, won't own, and is unanswered?
Your time has expired. Thank you.
What's going to happen to it after 30 years? Please don't vote without the answers being questions. Thank you for your time.
Hello. Thank you, honorable mayor, council members. My name is Erin McCarthy. I am the general manager at Thirty Three Taps, actually here to speak on behalf of Ryan Floyd, the owner of Thirty Three Taps. We thank you for agreeing to support the request brought by Sebastian Kornick regarding SB 1383. We appreciate you looking into it. Just wanted to also add some things that we would like to ask for you to consider. Allowing for a grace period or transitional pricing structure to help businesses adapt without facing immediate financial strain. Also ensuring that all contracts are thoroughly negotiated and structured with long-term value in mind. On behalf of the entire Culver City business community, all local businesses here continue to recover from the pandemic and face rising costs across labor, food, insurance, and now utilities, we must work together as business owners and as a community to push back against unsustainable cost increases wherever possible. But we do thank you again for your time here and for your consideration of the topic. Thank you.
Kareem Sahali.
Good evening, council. Good evening, staff. I have three topics I'd like to brush really fast with the time that I have. The first one is I want to echo Jeff Schwab's comments regarding conflict of interest. The second one and the third one are tied to safety. It's been a real, I remember when it, when it came to the council, it was a huge deal and everybody was up in arms, but once the Jackson Gate opened on the Bayana Creek back path, none of the hysteria materialized. And as of today, no crime has been determined to come from that gate. So I just want to point out that when we, you know, propose a bike lane or staff is or Public Works is pushing for a bike lane or any kind of transit, all the crime that has been decreed is never there to materialize. And then, still on safety, since we are in a financial distress right now, I really would like John Nagbar, our city manager, to stop the low-key, low-quality TSA theater that is at the door that cost us millions of dollars. We can spare all that wasteful expenses. We already have armed officers right there in the room that are far more efficient. We have a police department that are seconds away from us. We don't need to spend that money. Thank you so much.
Since it was brought up twice tonight, city attorney, please kind of opine on what your, what a recommendation is versus an actual...
Yes, and I'd also, I also feel like I need to clarify that, because I feel like I take issue with the fact that the speaker has indicated that our office and myself do not act with integrity when we evaluate issues and give advice. We give advice all across every seat of that dais on both sides. We help council members determine whether, for themselves, because it's ultimately a council member's decision. We help guide them through the rules to determine whether there is a potential legal conflict or whether there isn't one. In some cases, we've encouraged council members to seek FPPC opinion advice because it may be questionable. And so I just wanted to mention that because we have, we look at these issues objectively, regardless of the politics of any in particular council member.
And just to clarify, your, you give recommendations only. It's up to the council members whether or not to...
It's ultimately up to the city council member of whether to participate or recuse. In fact, if a complaint is filed, the council member doesn't even have immunity if they've received advice from our office. The only immunity they would have is if they've received an opinion from the FPPC, because the responsibility ultimately lands under the rules with the council member. But we, like I said, it's a very, it can be. Sometimes it's, it's a simple, a simple issue, but in many cases, it can be a very complex analysis, particularly when it comes to applying potential exceptions under the public generally rule. I'm not going to get, many, many examples were mentioned during the public comment. I'm not going to get into the weeds of those examples. Those discussions with, between our office and the council members are privileged, and it's up to council members if they want to share more details about their individual conflicts with members of the public. But we do, do evaluate everything very carefully, and it is a complex analysis, and it's applied objectively across the board.
I just want to share that I was not aware that it was my choice. I thought it was mandated to me by your office to recuse, so I just want to be clear about that. Thanks.
I appreciate that clarification, and I apologize if there was any misunderstanding. And we have since clarified that because we, that's the impression that we got.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great. And we are done with the public comment? Okay, wonderful. Can we move on to consent calendar? Oh, sorry, we need to file. May I get a motion to file and receive public correspondence?
I have a motion by council member Vera, segment by Vice Mayor Puza, to receive and file correspondence. May begin voting. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Do we have any comments on consent?
Yes, we have six speakers signed up.
Okay. Can we hear from them, please?
The first three will be Craig Schoenbaum, Mara Bomarito, and Kathy Brown. Craig Schoenbaum?
Good evening, city council. My name is Craig Schoenbaum, and I am currently on the board for Culver City Sister City Committee and also the co-president-elect for the board, so I'm sure you're probably going to be seeing more of me in the future. I'm here to voice my support, along with the rest of the board, for changing the name of two meeting rooms at Veterans Memorial Building in Vest Park. And the first one is changing from the current Palm Room to be renamed the Capodero Lando Room in honor of one of the five sister cities, which is situated on northern Sicily in Italy. I personally visited there with some of the city council members and had an extremely moving and emotional experience being shown all of the best parts of our sister city. And also to have the representative for the major milestone that's coming up next month with their centennial celebration, which would be a wonderful presentation to be able to send to them that it has been accepted for part of our council or municipal buildings to be renamed in their honor. The second item was the current Yanji Iksan City Room to be renamed simply the Iksan City Room. Yanji City, China, was a sister city of ours for about 10 years, but no longer exists since 2004. Iksan City, which is about 100 miles south of Seoul, is another one of our sister cities that I have visited with some of the council and had a tremendous experience. I'd like to do something that I had with the different city councils in those places, which just makes me simply want to dance.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Mara Bomarito?
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien, Vice Mayor Puza, and council members. My name is Mara Bomarito, and I am a board member also of Culver City Sister City Committee. And I'm here also to support the idea of changing the name of our municipal room to Capodero Lando. I wanted to let you know that we are, there's a delegation that will be visiting as honored guests for the 100th anniversary of the city of Capodero Lando, and the delegation will consist of Jim Clark, a former mayor and council member for many years, as we all know, Lindsay Carlson, a school board member, and very excited that she's going because we're going to beginning, begin a student exchange program with students from Culver City and students from Capodero Lando. I'm the chairperson for the Capodero Lando relationship, and we'll be working on that together. And hopefully, next summer, we'll be bringing students from Capodero Lando to Culver City, and the following summer, our Culver City students will visit Capodero Lando. So thank you very much for your support, and I hope that one day, the other four members of this council will have the opportunity to visit Capodero Lando, Sicily, Italy. Thank you.
Your next three speakers are Jamie Wallace, Kevin Dedecatoria, and Mario Washington. Jamie Wallace? I am not seeing online. Is Jamie Wallace in the house? Okay, moving on. Kevin Dedecatoria?
Good evening. I'm Kevin. I guess my time is up, eh?
Your time has expired.
Am I in jeopardy tonight? Anyways, good evening. My name is Kevin Dedicatoria. I am speaking about consent, item number eight. I really am looking forward to actually seeing this go through. I am, of course, concerned about, you know, hydrogen buses, just because of the concerns about the, just about like the flammability and the upkeep in the long run. But unfortunately, the research development is not there for 100% electric buses. I definitely want to see like the improvements and potential relocation of Culver City Transit Center. You know, I actually took it recently, and I definitely think there's a lot of improvements for those who, you know, use it regularly and just, you know, want to find other ways to get around Culver City and elsewhere without having to use their car all the time. And we talk about those who are, we, you know, we're just honoring those who are seniors, and you know, last month was Autism Awareness Month, hi. And it's just, just as we keep Culver City Transit Center in mind, it's finding ways to accommodate those who are seniors, those living with disabilities, you know. Some of us do take paratransit, some of us ride the fixed routes, and as we, as you approve item eight, keep in mind, keep those in mind. I think there may or may not be this misconception in the public that those who are older and those who take, or those with disabilities do not regularly take fixed routes, but I think it's important that as we go along with these transit center plans, that we make transit available, not just to those who regularly ride it, but to those who want to get around with not having to use their car. Thanks.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Maria Washington?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members and guests. I am Maria Washington. I represent Community Corporation of Santa Monica, and I just wanted to thank you all for your continued support for the Jubalo Village Development Project. We appreciate your, your support, and I just wanted to go over a few things. I know we have put many efforts, we provided a roadmap on what we're doing, so we've provided that roadmap. We've have five funding applications that we have submitted for, one to the county, which was unsuccessful. We kind of had an idea of that, and I know, you know, Mayor O'Brien, you know, has, has some items and some things about that as well that he's going to speak to sometime in the future. In addition to that, we provided a application to Cali HFA, the, for some vouchers, additional vouchers, which were waitlisted for, so we'll know more about that in the future. In addition to that, in conjunction with the city of Culver City, we applied for a home key application, and that total amount for the home key application is rather a little bit above $19 million. We've also applied for a supernova application, about $20 million. What that means is if we receive those fundings after the June 9th, those funds will supplant the funds that we're requesting from the city of Culver City, the $16 million. So again, we have provided this information, some updates on our roadmap, but just wanted to cover that and definitely say that, you know, we want to see the full, the commitment that you guys are going to look at for the June 9th budget meeting, and definitely hope that, you know, it's favorable. Any questions? I know I just making some comments, so just want to make sure. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
And Jamie Wallace is now online?
Hello, I'll make this short and sweet. I want to talk about C3. Folks, it's really important that you understand how the budget process works, and for you to really get a sense of what's going on. The budget will be online soon, according to our, our friend, Mr. Nagbar, and you can go to it, make comments, and there's very important meetings on the 19th and the 20th, folks, where you, each of the departments are going to present what they need, and then you better all come back for the June 9th meeting, because that's when the budget will be approved. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any items that council members want to pull? Councilman Fish?
I had a quick question on C7.
C7, okay. Vice Mayor?
C8.
C7, C8.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Dimitri. Good to be with you this evening.
Thank you. I don't need a staff report, but I was just curious how this area was selected for investment out of all of our improvement plans.
This was a request that came from several residents in the area to look into these improvements. Staff went out there, investigated, and sure enough, the curb, gutter, and sidewalk are in dire need of improvement, as well as some drainage in the area. Every time it rains, water puddles and pools, and we have to take care of the situation for safety reasons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and C8?
And I don't need a staff report or anything. I just wanted to thank Mr. Dedicatoria for his comments, and then also just congratulate the Transportation Department for pursuing through grants. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I think we can vote on all consent items at once, C1 through C10?
I see a motion by council member Vera, seconded by council member Fish, to approve the consent, consent calendar. May begin voting? That motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, before we get into the, the main agenda, I have to ask my colleagues if they would so graciously entertain a, a request for me to pull A2 off of the agenda. I spoke with the city attorney, and being that I am a small business owner, she's going to opine on, on, we'll discuss whether the public generally exemption applies for this or not. As a small business owner, I'd love to participate, but obviously, there's conflict that I want to make sure is not a conflict of interest, but I have some great ideas I'd like to share if my colleagues would support it. I would ask to pull this item. If not, then I'd have to recuse myself. I just don't want to, if people are here who want to speak on it, I don't want to hold them hostage all night long.
My only issue is just the amount of, the backlog of things that are waiting for airtime at council. That will just reduce, maybe, could we maybe move A2 to the end so that we could see if it's super late, and if it's really late, we could bump it? I mean, that's just an idea. Because I think our biggest, our biggest backlog right now...
The city attorney would need more time than that to come up with a conclusion, so it wouldn't even, if we got to it later on this evening. If you guys want to do it, that's fine, I just need to recuse myself, but I'd love to participate in it. I'm okay with that.
Sure.
Just to confirm, we have Vice Mayor Puzza with the nodding head.
Sure, yeah.
Mayor O'Brien and Councilmember Fish.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
And I'll just say that it can come, I mean, obviously, it's up to the city manager's office and clerk's office, but from my perspective, it can come back at the very next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're under public hearing. While staff is getting settled, may I have a motion to receive and file affidavit of mailing, publishing, and posting of the public notice?
I have a motion by council member Vera, seconded by Vice Mayor Puzza. May begin voting? That motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, great. Ready for a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, council, and community members here and watching from home. My name is Emily Stadniki. I'm the current planning manager. Tonight, we will present on the proposed update to the subdivision ordinance. City staff and RINCON, the city's consultants, are here to answer any questions. The city subdivision ordinance has not been modified much over the years. This new ordinance will bring our subdivision processes into compliance with recently adopted state legislation, create streamlined procedures for shifting to administrative review and approval of subdivision maps, allow for small lot subdivisions, creating fee simple land lots as an alternative to condominiums, and codify urban lot splits. The primary driver is to incentivize housing production. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Jose Mindeville, Associate Planner in the current Planning Division. He is the city's project manager for this effort.
Thank you. Good evening. The ordinance will incorporate state bills 9 and 450, which require a ministerial approval... I'm sorry. Thank you, and good evening. The ordinance will incorporate state bills 9 and 450, which require a ministerial approval for up to four units on single-family zone lots, by splitting a single lot into two lots and constructing, and constructing two units per lot. The ordinance also includes language that implements SB 684 and SB 1123, requiring ministerial approval of 10 or fewer lots and units. The new small lot subdivision code language in the ordinance will allow a lot in the R2 and most multifamily zoned lots to be subdivided into separate land lots with densities not exceeding the maximum density prior to the subdivision. This is an alternative to condominium subdivision. Small lot subdivision processes will no longer require an exception to the subdivision ordinance. Current approval authority lies with the Planning Commission for parcel maps, that is four or fewer lots or airspaces, and with the city council for maps, that is five or more lots or airspaces. The new ordinance will shift approval authority to the administrative level, thereby aligning with the administrative review thresholds in the zoning code, which include developments of 25 or fewer units. Further, when a hearing is required, such as the development of 26 or more units, the Planning Commission shall be the final approval authority, with the city council deciding on subdivision applications only if appealed. The new subdivision ordinance requires a sequo negative declaration because the ordinance is removing layers of discretionary review, and it was not studied in the general plan EIR. The city received two comments. One notes the Governor's Office of Planning and Research is now the Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, and another comment expressed concern over impacts on traffic in utilities. The name was corrected, and the ordinance will not have an impact to traffic in utilities because it was not, it will not increase the overall development density or scale beyond what is outlined in the general plan and the zoning code. Therefore, no impacts were identified, and staff recommends adoption of a negative declaration. Planning conducted meetings with members of the development community and staff from city departments that work on, with subdivisions. There was also a Planning Commission study session and a Planning Commission hearing in February of this year. The new code language reflects the input from these meetings, such as shifting review authority to align with the existing planning procedures established in the zoning code. The commission recommends the city council adopt the new subdivision ordinance. In summary, the proposed amendments will bring the subdivision ordinance into compliance with state law, facilitate housing production through, through streamlining processes, and satisfy various general plan policies related to housing based on the preceding information and analysis. Staff recommends the city council introduce an ordinance approving the new subdivision code and approve by resolution the small lot subdivision design standards. That concludes the presentation. We're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Thank you both for the presentation. So this is, this is exciting in that, you know, state law has given us this opportunity to create more housing in our communities, so, and thank you for going back and forth with me, Ms. Stadniki. Can you give us an understanding of how much of our city, give or take, is eligible to take advantage of this new law, to subdivide their lot and create more housing and potentially more property value for them, more housing for other people? Seems like a win-win.
Yes, there, 47.9% of the city would be in the zones that are allowed for this to take place. There is a requirement, there are some, a few other requirements. The land has to be vacant for the last five years. I think that's really the only, newly created land parcels must be no smaller than 1,200 square feet, and the lot cannot be more than 1.5 acres that's going to be subdivided.
Thank you. And just to clarify, I know we've been going back and forth on this, the vacant last five years, vacant of tenants in the last five years, right? So it can be, it can be, if it's your home, you can subdivide it, as long as it's not, as long as there hasn't been a tenant living there in the past five years, is my interpretation of the law, but I'm...
We're actually going to need to check on that. That wasn't our understanding, but we want to double-check because we weren't making that distinction. And the way we read the code, it seems to indicate something else, but we want to do more research.
Okay, thank you. The, yeah, some folks who are really familiar with this flagged this for me, that, you know, how we define vacant is going to really determine how much we get to take advantage of this. So that's why I'm bringing this up, is just to make sure that we're defining in a way that's consistent with state law. And from what I, from what I'm reading, and I appreciate you going back and doing some digging on this, from what I'm reading, it's specific to those who had a tenant in the past five years, not, and that, in that if, if you can still declare your, your unit vacant as long as there wasn't a tenant in the last five years. So thank you for looking into that for us, I appreciate it, because that will determine how much it gets to be used. Thanks. That's all my questions for now.
Thank you. Councilman Moore? Councilman Vera? Vice Mayor? Okay, great.
I did have one more.
Go for it.
I always remember them right as we're about to move on. How will we be letting our community know about this opportunity to subdivide your lot in this way?
Our plan was to create a special webpage in the department and then do a social media campaign, including a gov delivery, to get the word out.
Fabulous. Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I have a motion by council member Vera, seconded by Vice Mayor Puzza, to open the public hearing. You may begin voting? That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. Do we have any public comment?
There are two people who have signed up for public comment. The first is Kathy Brown. Okay, you can come talk to me. The next one is... Give me one second. Kevin Dedicatoria?
Honestly, I just want to say, actually, just want to speak in support of this because I get that, you know, I personally live in a room right now with a bunch of roommates in, in a single-family house, and I guess everyone's housing situations are different, and not everyone, for example, can, cannot afford or does not need an apartment or a house in order to live in Culver City, but they just need somewhere to live and have something like an apartment, like, kind of like a year lease or some kind of agreement to just make it, just to live in Culver City, live and work in Culver City. So, I like how this, I'd gen, gen item tries to make it easier for people who want to accommodate those who want to live here but may not necessarily want to, say, live in apartment, live in a house, and it gives more opportunities for people to actually live in Culver City and work here. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end.
This is our final speaker.
Okay, great. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, seconded by Vice Mayor Puza, to close the public hearing. You may begin voting. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, do we have any further comment from colleagues? No? Councilmember Moore?
If, I'd like to make the motion that we move forward with staff recommendation to adopt the negative declaration and introduce this new subdivision ordinance, replacing our current ordinance, and adopt a resolution approving the small lot subdivision design standards and incorporating the standards into the objective design standards. I'm really grateful for all the hard work that staff has put into this and all the analysis. I know it's not easy, making sure that we're in compliance with state law, but I'm really excited what this means about us welcoming new neighbors and new opportunities for housing in our community. So, just a heartfelt thanks to all the work that went into this item being before us this evening. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Can we do all three parts in one motion?
Yes.
Okay, great. There's a, looks like there's a motion and a second.
So I have a motion by Councilmember McMorn, seconded by Councilmember Vera, to approve staff's, staff's recommendation. You may begin voting. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. Same team. May I have a motion to receive and file the affidavit of mailing, publishing, and posting of the public notice for P-two, PH-two?
I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, seconded by Mayor O'Brien, to receive and file the affidavit. You may begin voting. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. Can we have a brief staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and community members. I'm Emily Stadniki, current planning manager. I'm joined by Associate Planner Gabriela Silva, who managed this process. We are here to provide a brief overview of the proposed zoning code cleanup. Starting with the why question, we generally do this on a yearly basis. As we implement the zoning code, there are inevitably items that need to be corrected or adjusted for clarity to ensure that the code is easily understood by the public and easy to administer by staff. Our goal is to apply the zoning code effectively so we can get projects entitled and moving forward. Sometimes items arise through feedback from code enforcement, which are assessed and refined as warranted. And finally, we obviously need to comply with new state laws that come into effect, so we have a couple of changes necessitated by those. One component of the proposed changes relates to minor but important updates to development standards. Some examples are allowing a project in a mixed-use zone to credit half the alley width towards rear setback requirements when adjacent to low-density residential zone, aligning rooftop deck setbacks with the underlining zone requirement, and requiring rooftop decks to be set back five feet along rear building edge. Changes for clarification and consistency are also proposed to standards for projections like mechanical equipment and screening. Several changes are proposed for fence standards to address issues that have been encountered in the field. These include increasing fence heights for residential properties adjacent to commercial properties and alleyways, and between residential rear yards with mutual neighbor agreement. Changes to the definition section include clarifying a carport can be located over a parking area as well as a driveway, limiting the maximum depth of a port cochere to sixteen feet, and correcting the side yard definition to include the entire lot depth. Details and definitions relating to specific land uses will also be updated. Child care day, child daycare homes will be only subject to restrictions that apply to other residential uses of the same type in the same zone, which is also state law. A restriction limiting health and fitness facilities to three thousand square feet in the downtown will be eliminated. A reference to the alcohol sales section will be added to additional land uses like theaters and event centers, noting they can also request to sell alcohol. And the food retail definition will be updated to eliminate restrictions on food consumption area, number of seats, and kitchen equipment. As you know, parking is not required, but when provided, it needs to meet certain standards. Revisions related to parking include reinstating requirement for a fully enclosed facade when parking structures face residential districts, creating an allowance for additional permeable hardscape in the front yard for parking when no other parking is provided, and eliminating flat minimums for electric vehicle parking to minimize the burden on small projects, and clarifying that higher-level EV can be provided to satisfy lower-level EV requirements. These changes are proposed to align with new state laws. Assembly Bill twenty-six thirty-two prohibits a local agency from treating a thrift retail store differently from a non-thrift retail store, selling the same products. So this distinction has been removed. And to comply with AB twenty-nine oh four, the amendment will increase the code-required publication period from fourteen days to twenty days for Planning Commission hearing on zoning code amendments. Although the state requirement is only for amendments involving changes to land uses, it seemed cleaner to apply this to all zoning code amendments. To refresh your memory, during the zoning code update last year, staff proposed reducing the community meetings requirement to one for residential projects and two for non-residential projects. This was for a couple of reasons. State legislation severely limits our discretionary review on housing projects, and more meetings is at cross purposes with streamlining housing projects. We also surveyed our neighboring jurisdictions, and no others require two community meetings. Only two out of five, West Hollywood and Santa Monica, require a single community meeting, with Beverly Hills, LA City, and LA County not requiring any community meetings at all. But in September twenty twenty-four, city council voted to require two community meetings for all projects. On March tenth, this matter was revisited as part of the council policy on public notification and community engagement and remanded to the Planning Commission. They subsequently recommended reducing the requirement to one for residential projects. The other item here builds in flexibility for the Planning and Development Director to determine if hybrid meetings and websites are required for smaller three- and four-unit residential projects. In conclusion, based on the preceding information and the required findings, staff recommends the city council introduce the proposed ordinance for the zoning code amendment as shown in Exhibit A, as well as an exemption from sequo. That concludes the presentation. We're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Fish?
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Stadniki. I appreciate revisiting the community meetings requirement and for you letting us know that we were an outlier there with West Hollywood and Santa Monica also just requiring one, and Beverly Hills, LA City, and LA County not requiring any. Can you let us know, like, what are sort of the consequences of more, of these types of requirements? Like, is, does it have a tendency or the ability, or, sorry, the potential to impact housing production?
It can definitely impact the timeline. There's the meeting notice requirements, the meeting locations, setting up and allowing for the hybrid aspect of the meetings. We've all heard from developers that, that adds time and money to their process.
Thank you for that. And then finally, are there often major changes made to a project following a second community meeting, in your experience?
Generally not. We do see some changes after the first community meeting with some regularity, but at, at the level of, or at the time of the second community meeting, it's already been through one round of review by the city, and so generally, things are pretty worked out at that point.
So you see, you see some change happen after that first community meeting based on community input, in some cases, it sounds like?
Yes, it's, it depends. The, a lot of developers try to, you know, accommodate some requests from, from neighbors, location of balconies, window placement, things like that, when, when possible, but it, it really only happens after that first meeting.
Thanks for that. I appreciate it.
Anyone else with questions? Okay. Yeah, I'll wait for, to give comments at the end. Thanks. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, seconded by Vice Mayor Puza, to open the public hearing. You may begin voting. The motion passes with four i's, absent Councilmember McMorn. We currently have one speaker signed up, Kevin Dedecatoria.
Okay, great.
And I do have questions just about the zoning codes, like, I noticed that there are changes, I think it was for this or the previous one, about like improvements for like, you know, bicycle, like for those who are bike, for those who ride, for cyclists and for those who are for sidewalks. Would the, would it be under a separate part of the city, or like, would there be anything save those who want to like, ride the bus like I do, or those who want to, is that, or is that like a separate part when it comes, or is that not part of zoning? Or like for housing? Because like those who want to, like, go in there, like, there's some who are, I'm sorry, kind of had notes written down, but basically, there's like the generation after me, Generation Z, some don't want a car, some don't own a car, and there's like, some do want to take transit, and some, it's like, does this in any way, like, does the zoning code in any way have anything with transit, or is that like a separate thing? Like, like, like transit-oriented develop, like for development for transit, like?
I can request staff to answer you right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, it does. The, for instance, the zoning code does not require any car automobile parking in new projects, and we do require both long-term and short-term bike lockers and bicycle parking.
Okay, I was like asking just about, for those who like, for those who like, want to like take the bus, I was in, I was talking about like, the bus and like those who want to like take Culver City bus, and those who want to like, not active transportation, but for those who want to like take the bus like I do, and many others? Or is that a separate part of the?
It, it's somewhat separate, but we do have, the zoning code does affect that in ways that a lot of new projects are required to do, to post, like, bus routes and encourage carpooling and, and items like that. So it's sort of tangentially related to zoning.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that does answer my question, because, you know, I guess there's like ways that we can also encourage, like, that as part of like, as part of the zone, like part of zoning.
Dedecatoria, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily, quick, can you speak a little to like the transit-oriented districts? I think that might be a bit what, what I kept, Mr. Kevin was speaking on. I don't know if y'all can speak to that.
It's not part of this zoning code amendment, but Gabriela, you have a couple of thoughts?
Right, so we do have an existing transit-oriented development district near the Expo E-line, I'm sorry, the Metro E-line station. It's about a half-mile radius, and there are certain standards that are different for that district than other zones in the city in order to capitalize on that existing transportation infrastructure. But this item that we're reviewing tonight doesn't affect those standards or the, the boundaries of that district.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion by Councilmember Fish, a second by Councilmember Vera, to close the public hearing. You may begin voting. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, any final comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Fish? No? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you for the work. Excited to move forward with these revisions.
Councilmember Vera? Vice Mayor? Okay, great. I just, thank you so much for all the work. I agree with the decision on the public comments, or on the, the public meeting numbers. That was really interesting to hear, that our neighboring cities have, we are an outlier. But I will say that I have witnessed over the years that, that, that at least that initial public comment period, or community meeting period does affect design. My sense is that developers go as big and as broad as they can early and expecting to get some feedback to, to modify it. And so it's, it's an important part of the process, I believe. So, thank you. May I have a motion to introduce an ordinance approving city-initiated zoning code amendment P-two zero-two-five zero-two-three ZCA, having various sections of Title seventeen zoning code of the Culver City Municipal Code to make the corrections, clarifications, and updates outlined in Exhibit A, and adopting an exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section one-five-zero-six-one B-three.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Fish and a second by Councilmember McMorn. You may begin voting. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, A-one.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Edgar Varela. I'm the City Special Events Manager. For your consideration, tonight is an award of a special events grants in aggregate amount of $192,000 for fiscal year 2025, '26, and designation of these events as city sponsored as recommended by the Special Events Grant Program City Council Ad Hoc Subcommittee. In addition to the aggregate amount of, the authorization of an allocation of $18,000 in contingency funds for off-cycle event support. The Special Event Grant Program is set forth in City Council policy enacted in 2017. The purpose of the program is to provide greater financial transparency, improve budget reliability, and create a centralized process for city sponsorship requests. Grant awards are intended to be used towards city permits and staffing services required for the event unless otherwise requested. This year, the Special Events Grant Program City Council Ad Hoc Subcommittee has recommended supporting 27 events with city sponsorship. The events include Independence Day Celebration, Culver City Car Show, Culver City Pride Celebration, Screenland 5K, and Culver City Art Walk. Thank you. Staffs available if you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? Let me get started.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Varela. Appreciate the presentation. So last year, we spent $156,000 on, on these events and now that's going up to 192, right? Is that accurate?
Yes.
And then are all of those, are all of, is all of this 192,000 hard costs that come out of the general fund?
No. So from the funds that we're putting forth right now, 156,000 is already in the fund. We're asking for an additional 54,000 for the special event grants and the contingency. From the way that the special event grant program works, most of the funds are used in in-kind and no funds are transferred. In some cases, the, there is some direct funding and that does come out of the fund.
So if it's, it's, if it's going from one department to another in the general fund, we don't consider that a direct, a hard cost? Is that what you're saying? Like if it's obligated to a department that exists within the general fund?
Hi, good evening, Councilmember.
A little wonky right now, sorry.
No, that's okay. It is considered a cost because there are real services, permit fees, staffing that are working. So it is a, is a cost. I think the difference here is that it's a cost that's paid back to the city for our services as opposed to a direct cash reimbursement or funding to an organization to spend as, as they will.
Okay, thank you. Couple more questions. The, the grant that the table outlines, or the grant amounts that are recommended, are those all in-kind grants? For example, you know, when I was organizing Culver City Pride for the past several years, it was, we would hit our, you know, we would have like $8,000 or something from the city. We would, we would use six, we'd only need six of in-kind, but we could still use that extra 2K for all the other costs of the event. So is this just a grant of the exact amount that's on the table? Or is it only in-kind? And if they don't use it all, they don't get the rest of it?
Generally, for most of the grants that are given that are under $10,000, they're primarily all in-kind. Some of our larger signature events that I noted do have a combination of in-kind and direct funding, where we do ask to look at a budget in order to give some of the additional funding that was not used to the producers of the event.
Okay, yeah, I ask because I know some of these events really need the full grant amount that they're, like, and they're, and, you know, a lot of them are pursuing outside sponsorships as you work with them and know. So was just curious if there's a policy around which events get the full grant amount and which events don't? I guess what I'm hearing you say is that under 10K is in-kind and if they don't hit that limit, then they don't get the rest of that money, but over 10K they do? Or is there a set policy about this as a discretionary?
Councilmember, there's no set policy on what Edgar just mentioned. It just so happens that for some events, generally anything below 10K probably needs those fee waivers. But my understanding of the event policy, I believe the wording states, and I think we clarified this last year, is that the grant can be a combination of in-kind and direct funding.
Okay, so if an event really needs their entire grant, even if they've only used a portion of it for in-kind city fees, that's something that the city accommodates usually?
I mean, we haven't had... Apologies. We haven't had a lot of those circumstances where there's been more direct funding than in-kind funding, just because of the services and the fee waivers that are required into going into a special event. But theoretically, the policy does allow it. So the Subcommittee does look at what the application is stating, what, and they make their decisions based on the needs of that event.
Okay. Maybe this is something that we could iron out in the future, just because with each event, some, you know, some events might have one understanding of the policy and others might expect the full grant amount. It just might be good to, for us to kind of decide, you know?
I think we clarified that in the mandatory meeting. There's a mandatory meeting that's held with all the special event grant applicants that Edgar runs, and I'm pretty sure that it was clarified in that meeting.
And clarified that what exactly? Sorry, I didn't...
That the policy states it can be a combination of directed and in-kind funding.
Okay. It can be. Okay. Interesting. I, I also just wanted to ask if there was, if there was any kind of, what the process was for determining the, the amounts for each event? Can you go into that a little bit? Thank you.
Yeah, the, one of the attachments on there are the guidelines in order to qualify for the grant program. And then with the Subcommittee, we look at various factors, you know, the contribution, the cultural contribution to the community, the legacy of the event, how long it's been going on, the support that it needs, the variety of different things that it supports in the city. One of the goals of the program is to incentivize new events to come to the city and contribute both culturally and economically to the city. So we tend to give funds to a lot of small new events coming in in order to give them some incentives to bring their events to Culver City. And then other larger signature events, like, you know, the Independence Day Celebration, the car show and art walk are longstanding events that contribute significantly culturally to the city, which need financial support. And so looking at the, what we normally have in the budget, we try to, within the Subcommittee, distribute that in a way that seems equitable to give. And a lot of times, the goal is to try to fund everybody in some sort of way to support them.
Thank you. And then you mentioned the word equitable. I know we're in the middle of a racial equity action plan, the creation of that and the creation of like an equity framework. Was there anything applied here in terms of an equity lens? Or is that something that in the future we could, once this analysis is done and this report comes out, that we could collaborate with them and put an, an equity framework on how we distribute money for special events?
I mean, I believe we can do that, but right now, I don't believe it's, it's part of the process. The equitable portion of it is just making sure that we have a variety of different things. If you look at the list of events that we support, we're supporting events that have to do with plants, support events that have to do with rocks and minerals, with bicycling, with, you know, different cultural aspects. So I guess in the sense of when I say equitable, I mean covering all aspects of society in Culver City and not just music or not just, you know, cars and trying to cover all the different interests to provide a quality life here in Culver City.
Thank you. Yeah, just ending on, I would love to see, when we do have that framework, we'd love to see it applied here because the special events that you guys run are just so, they're, they're just part of the fabric of why people love to live here. So thank you for your work. Thank you for, you know, you, you work your butt off to make so many amazing events here in Culver City. It makes it really a wonderful place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Thanks for this overview and the hard work to bring this to us. I did want to just sort of plus one to some of the inquiries that Councilmember Fish just lifted up. Another thing that I think might be helpful is if I see this spreadsheet where, you know, organizers event title, category, location date, and recommended grant amount, one thing I think could be helpful is if we saw, because I think when I served on this committee, we would see like how much, our folks would submit like how much the event costs and how much folks are specifically asking for. I don't know. And/or since there's, there is some sort of rubric or evaluation that, that would sort of, and again, it doesn't, I don't want to say that it has to be like submitted in this package annually, but that there's some, just some sort of a process that we are going through that's transparent about like how we're deciding to give and, and if there's a rubric, oh, you know, based on those things you've lifted up, Manager to Varela in terms of contributions to, you know, years of service to Culver City or helping this population, just so that it is clear about sort of how we're evaluating one versus the other. Because I'm sure there's probably some variances here on the amounts requested and what was given, just so that we kind of have that, that clarity as to how we're sort of arriving at these amounts. I know that there's always so much more need than we have funds for, unfortunately. That just tends to be something that we run up every time, but I do really appreciate the effort being made or being vocalized this evening of trying to really attract new events to our community and really opening, opening up the opportunity for new partnerships to come out. And I appreciate that intention lifted up by your amazing team. So just thanks for the work that brought this to us. And yeah, would just love to maybe see the cost of event and/or the requested amount here as well. But, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, in the application process, there is about 30 different questions. So in the, in the chart, there is about 30 different things that are part of the process too. And then a couple of the new events that we funded and that are now part of this and not off-cycle have been new festivals like the Pan African Film Festival, the Michelle Film Festival, and, you know, our longstanding partnerships with like the Asian Film Festival too. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's really exciting. Thank you for all the hard work of your amazing team. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Vera.
No questions, just Edgar and Lane, thank you both so, so much for all your hard work. My colleagues said you guys do an awesome job and put on some great, great events. Yeah, that's it. No other questions. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
I know these are questions, but I just want to say that in addition to the evaluation criteria in this policy statement, we are working on creating more structure and criteria to apply funding equally. We're also creating structure on how to apply funding equitably. So we did look at Pride, for instance, which for, you know, given the current political climate, we're looking at how do we look at that in a different lens than how do we apply that funding equally? So we kind of gave a little boost. Just looking at, also, you know, we adjusted the city fees. The cost for police has gone up along with everything, but that's one of the big costs in these events. So do we have a guideline for how we assign police officers to an event? How many officers per person? And is there a policy to determine if a event needs police, security personnel, or none of the above? I know we're, this is a work in progress. We're building the plane as we, you know, take off. I do see...
Good evening, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the question. So obviously, every event's different. The requests usually come for city, city events go through our permit section. We analyze each one. We look at factors, how large is the crowd going to be? Is there traffic control? Are we shutting down streets? Is alcohol being served? There's a variety of factors, but we always do our best to ensure that we're being good stewards of the budget and mitigating costs. Some of the things we do to offset that is we try to always use civilian support as much as we can, whether it's our volunteers, our reserve officers, or explorers to staff those events. Oftentimes, the offset cost will use our parking enforcement officers or CSOs that come at a cheaper cost than police officers. And then another tactic we use to mitigate those costs is to use officers that are on duty. So an example would be the drone show last year, huge event, thousands of people out there. We utilize our set team, our bike team, to go out there that happened to be on duty to work that event to avoid those overtime costs. Events like the car show that we had last week, huge turnout, thousands of people, that required a lot of traffic control, so we did have officers there on overtime. But another example was Walking Rollers a couple weeks ago. We shut down numerous streets for several hours. There was no overtime cost associated with that. We utilized all our officers and parking enforcement officers who are on duty to help mitigate those costs.
Great. Thank you for the answer. And did I hear you say that we, is it possible to use security personnel instead of officers in some cases? Or, I'm sorry if you said that.
Yeah, I didn't touch on that. That is another option. Obviously, safety is paramount. We want to ensure that all the attendees are safe attending that. We do oftentimes have to deal with crowd control and management. You know, we have to ensure that we have safe pedestrian and vehicular traffics, which requires traffic control. So security officers, private security officers, aren't trained in that. Our goal is obviously mitigate any kind of liability for the city. You know, the high visibility patrol officers also have the ability to prevent and deter crime. And in the event, knock on wood, we haven't had it, but if there was a serious event like an active shooter or a mass casualty event, our officers are more equipped to respond to that due to the, due to the fact we could contact officers on duty as well as our mutual aid partners. But private security, security could handle general footbeats and assist.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to add to that, that we have been having an ongoing conversation about, you know, figuring out some sort of matrix. And every event, especially medium to larger size events, there is an ongoing conversation with PD, and we work out the details of what is needed for that event and, you know, work, work hand in hand with PD to determine the level of involvement that's needed, regardless of budgets, and safety is the first priority, but keeping, you know, budget in mind and making sure that the events are well-produced and safe for everyone. So it is, it is like an ongoing partnership, and it's not anything that's just set in stone. We look at each event to make sure that it's appropriate for what it is.
Got it. Thank you.
Mayor, may I add one more question to Vice Mayor Puza's subject? Thank you, Captain Belante, for that info. Is there a actual City Council policy around the police presence at, at our events? Or is it up to the discretion of CCBD to recommend, you know, to events? For example, oh, we, we should have this many officers at a given event?
Yeah, thank you.
Like I'm thinking about like the, the farmer's market, for example?
Correct. Yeah, thank you for the question. There's no actual policy that I am aware of. It's at the discretion of the Police Department. And like Edgar said, we analyze each, each event on a case-by-case basis. Like I said, number of people, is there traffic control, alcohol being served? There's a variety of factors that we take into consideration, but as far as I'm aware, there is no policy that states there's a certain amount of officers that need to staff a certain event.
Or like number of people that triggers an officer being there or something like that?
Yeah, there's no policy. Excuse me, there's no policy that I'm aware of that has an officer per attendee ratio or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think there was a conversation with Chief Sims where we were looking at possibly putting something together to see if that makes sense in order to have a slightly clearer guideline on that. And I did want to add that I think there is a policy, when an event has alcohol, there's a mandated PD presence for alcohol events.
I would be really interested in that, in that conversation, especially in the context of we're having, we're considering whether to host, you know, the... we're having, we're considering whether to host, you know, the Olympics, this event in Town Plaza, and three-fifths of the proposed budget is, you know, our CCPD and the requirements there. So I just want to, I think that would be a really enlightening conversation to have in that context, too, because that's a lot of the costs or the proposed costs in that event. But thank you, thank you for that info. That was really helpful. And thanks, Vice Mayor Puzza, for bringing it up.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions right now. Do we have any speakers? No speakers, okay. So, final comments.
I just want to say thank you to the subcommittee for the recommendations and the work that went into this. Thank you, Mr. Varela, thank you, Elaine, thank you to everyone that, you know, continue to support the events that make our city so vibrant. I'm looking forward to next year and all the amazing things that we have in front of us. I just continue to echo that I hope we can sort of like nail down some of these like ambiguities, I might call them, like where, you know, an event might not know if they're given the entire grant in kind or as an actual grant, whether it's in kind or not. It sounds like they're entitled to the full amount. And then finally, with the equity portion, just want to make sure that's baked into the process in a really like regimented way, so that we can make sure that events that might not have the means but are really important for folks in our community to be represented, that those events are prioritized. So those would be my parting thoughts, but looking forward to a great year next year. Thanks.
Councilmember Warren.
Thank you. I won't reiterate what I mentioned before, but again, much appreciation for your team. I think for the level of what comes out, you know, $210,000 is still a lot of money, but what folks get in terms of memories and joy and just community building, I think is really at the core of, you know, what we're trying to do here. So I'm really grateful for the work that's gone into it. I look forward to, you know, a bit more, a little bit more structure as we move forward, but really grateful again for the continued investment in one another and building community and memories in Culver City. So thank you, and looking forward to what's ahead.
Mayor, just wanted to state we have an update to the motion when it's time.
Okay, great, thank you. Vice Mayor, have anything?
Just want to say thank you to the team, and I really appreciate Councilmember Fish's recommendations, and I share them, just trying to add more criterion structure to it. And thank you to all the people who submit applications for grants and to all the events. And just really excited for this upcoming year. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, just echoing everyone's thoughts on what a great job Econ Dev does and Elaine and Edgar, really appreciate it. I really enjoy, worked on this with Vice Mayor Puzza as well. While I agree that there needs to be some uniformity and, you know, more, I guess, transparent guidelines for which we make decisions, I do feel really good about the effort that we all made to do that, you know, without the guidelines. But I agree that it's a good idea to have those in place. And we have a change in the recommended motion.
Yes, Mayor, sorry, we caught a small error in the motion. It's 192,000, the motion lists 191, so if you can make that correction, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So if I can get a motion with a correction on number one, it's award $192,000 in grants and designate 27 events a city-sponsored through the fiscal year, 2526 Special Events Grant Program, and allocate up to 18,000 in contingency for off-cycle event support, and authorize a city manager to administratively approve applicable city permits and licenses needed to conduct the events, provided such permits and licenses are consistent with the scope of the event and set forth in the grant application.
I have a motion by Councilmember Fish, a second from Councilmember Vera to approve the motion as amended. May begin voting. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, as requested earlier, we're pushing A2 to a later date and moving on to A3.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Shelley Wolfberg, Assistant to the City Manager. And this evening before you, you have an opportunity to consider a resolution. And the resolution title is Resolution of the City Council of the City of Culver City Expressing Culver City's Dedication to Peace and Diplomacy in Times of International Conflict and the Wise Use of City Funds. Tonight, there's an opportunity, if there are any recommended edits or questions or comments, and staff will take it all in, so, thank you.
Okay, great. Let's start with questions from my colleagues. Councilmember Fish.
Thank you. Hey, Shelley, thank you for putting this together. Can you just let us know just the degree of community input, if any, that it's received thus far?
Absolutely. The community input was just for public notification of city council agenda items. So it was just very general in that way, and that was the only announcement of this item.
Thank you. So, and so it hasn't been, we haven't heard from Iraq or Equity Human Relations Advisory Committee or anything on their thoughts or?
I haven't heard anything from them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I'm gonna ask right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Warren.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vera, okay, Vice Mayor. All right, I'm guessing we have a comment?
We have 18 speakers currently signed up to speak.
I'm gonna announce the first five. I have Maria Beg, Stephanie Sharp, Emily D., Mariah Fontin, and Hwang Najim Elabek. So Maria Beg, you do have time seated.
As you know, I'm Maria Beg, I'm Culver City resident, and I am in strong opposition to this resolution. To say that I was shocked when I saw it was an understatement. You know, I saw it posted on the agenda, and I read it, and I reviewed it, and I kept looking at it, and I read it again, and I read it again. And I, honestly, the only thing I could think was that this resolution is a direct attempt to silence what we've been asking for for these past several months, for the city council to recognize the ongoing genocide in Gaza, to pass a ceasefire resolution, to acknowledge the hurt and pain that this community is feeling. And we've been asking for months and months and months, and we've been ignored. And then this resolution comes up, saying that, whereas we encourage federal international relations, supporting the notion that international conflict should be addressed through dialogue and diplomatic means at the federal level, rather than through action by the city council. That is literally telling me and my community and everybody that's here tonight and everybody that's been here for months to sit down and shut up. That you don't want to hear what we have to say anymore. You don't want, you don't care about how we feel anymore. The way that we're impacted by the ongoing genocide should be left to the federal government, which we know how they're acting right now under this current administration. We know what they think about our cries and our calls for a ceasefire resolution, and that they are constantly currently aiding and continuing to aid an ongoing genocide with all of our tax-paying dollars. So to sit here and see a council that I voted for many members on this council, to know that now a resolution is being proposed telling me to sit down and be quiet, that my voice doesn't matter here, that the way that I feel has no bearing on this city or the way that the city council is going to decide how to move forward. It is a direct attempt to silence us, because I know that three members on this council voted in favor of an October 23 resolution in support of Israel. I know that four members on this council voted to light up Veterans Memorial blue and white in support of Israel. This council has previously voted in support of Ukraine after the Russia attacks. It has never shied away from international conflicts before. But now, when we are asking for an acknowledgement of an ongoing genocide, when we are asking for a ceasefire resolution, the city council decides that they want to absolve themselves of anything to do with international relations. How is that supposed to make us feel? That we are members of this community, that we are constituents? And again, we're told to just sit down and shut up and bear the pain that we're going through every single day? To know that we have community members that are losing their families every single day by the ongoing genocide, but it's not a local, it's not a local issue? It's not something that should be dealt with on a local level?
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Sharp.
Thank you. Hi, thank you. My name is Stephanie, and I work at a place that a couple of y'all walked out on in the fall. So it'd be a little weird to think that I could be heard, but I'm gonna do my best. So I appreciate the word peace, I do. The good girl inside, the one who placates and allows everyone else around me to be comfortable while I'm tortured. That girl wants to believe that y'all mean well by this. But the parts of me that have died 1,000 times before and since October of 2023 doesn't believe you at all. Peace has often been used as a code word for safety, and safety in turn is used as a weapon that protects a specific subset of the population from dissent that comes in. And if one subset of the population is deemed safe, that means the rest of us are vulnerable. And that math equates to inequity. Math will never lie to you. In choosing to make past statements in support of a regime that enacts terror, that weaponizes starvation, a brutality equal to that of the Holocaust, I ask you not to walk out and dismiss this by patting your backs on like fancy words, please. Shoot, all I can do is hope that this and future councils will act equitably, but what good is hope?
Emily D.
I'm here because I am against the resolution. A watered-down word salad written by Husbara probably about equality is not going to erase the harm and division that was done from the racist statement that Culver City Council members announced back in October 23. Meanwhile, you claim you don't deal with international issues. The least you could do to make amends is denounce the old statement and admit that it was wrong or remove it altogether. As a Palestinian Christian American who has been living here for the last 25 years, your new statement is a slap in my face. You are so disconnected from what is happening to your voters when most of your constituents are bigots. My ancestors passed olive trees in my family that's estimated to be between 600 to 800 years old outside Jerusalem. Councilmember Vera, how would you like it if someone showed up with machine guns and took your family's olive land from you? What would you do? What would you do if bulldozers came to all the buildings that you own and took them down because you are not allowed permits to update it to code? But the city can't give you permits because it's out of the jurisdiction. So would you try to stop them? Would you be, would you be happy about it, or would you fight back? Would you defend your family's olive trees? Why is my family not allowed to defend their olive trees? Mayor O'Brien, if someone showed up at your front yard and squatted with attack dogs protected by an army, would you fight back? Would you protect your personal property that you have worked hard your whole life? My cousin lost her house, worked for it 20 years for Israel to just bomb it into nothing. For what? For being born Christian in a small little area that now is coveted by Trump?
Thank you.
Maria Fontinjen, and you have one minute seated to you. Bye, Alice Kim.
Hello, I'm here to read a statement for Thistle Bussinger, a 2019 graduate of Culver City High School and longtime resident of Culver City, urging the council to reject this resolution. On April 30, 2024, for five hours, eyewitness Idan On and over 100 other aggressors beat my friends with metal rods and bricks, bear mace, and live fireworks, simply for advocating for Palestinians to be able to live in their homeland free from occupation. When I learned that Idan On was only 18, I wondered how someone so young could be so violent. I've toiled over this question and am forced to accept that Idan and people like him are products of their environment. Idan was never taught compassion, not by his mother, who bragged on X that she was, quote, "so proud of him for brutalizing us," nor by his community. His unequivocal support for the state of Israel, which has displaced millions of people from their homes and murdered over 100 human beings in Gaza and the West Bank, was never challenged. And now Idan is serving in the Israeli army and directly contributing to the genocide of Palestinians. I tell this story to say that we, as Culver City, are not separate from the world. It is irresponsible to take a stance of neutrality when there are people in our community who are directly impacted by what is going on in the world. I and many of my friends have been diagnosed with PTSD. Because we bear witness to the atrocities, we write to our cities and our governments and representatives, begging them to say something about how this is wrong, and nothing changes. At the UCLA encampment, I was brutalized and suffered a life-altering injury which causes daily chronic pain. I still cannot earn my living playing and teaching Taiko, which I started while a student at Marino Elementary. In a city where the governing body is too cowardly to condemn this violence, to say that this never should have happened to people in our community. At this point, a ceasefire resolution is the bare minimum. Refusing to take a stance tells Culver City's Arab-Americans, Jews, Filipinos, Armenians, Cambodians, survivors of Japanese internment, black residents, and undocumented neighbors that their diverse cultural and historical experiences don't matter, that their lived experiences will be forgotten and ignored. I implore you to reject A3. It is the city's responsibility to take a stance on all matters which affect the community. Sincerely, Thistle Bussinger. And speaking for myself, I also would like to add that it was kind of a shock to read the proposed resolution last week, and I too am against it. I think you need to maybe think what your community is telling you, that it just seems so hypocritical. And I'm with high schoolers all day long, and that's all they care about, fairness. And it's just not fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hwang Naim Elabek.
Dear councilmembers, I am a resident of Culver City and here to speak in opposition to Agenda Item A3, which suggests that international conflict should be left to the federal government and that the city should stay silent. From a medical and a humanitarian standpoint, silence in the face of mass suffering is not neutrality, is complicity. not neutrality, is complicity. I stood before, before many times to tell you how many children have died. It's 15,000 now by UNICEF. 100% of children are food insecure or starving. Children are dying from hunger, dehydration and the collapse of medical care with hospitals being bombed and medicines blocked. The New York Times showed CT scans of bullet wounds to the heads of children and dozens of American healthcare workers documenting deaths of children from ages 18 months to eight years, and the federal government didn't respond. Did you know that a Palestinian woman is killed every hour? That's 7,920 mothers. Cesarean deliveries, amputations and many surgeries are still being done without anesthesia. 1,400 healthcare workers have been killed. In late March, in late March, 14 medics and humanitarian workers were assassinated and found in a mass grave, including a voicemail of a young man to his mother. UN agencies confirm this is a man-made famine and is a violation of international human law. Speaking about this, is it, is this not peaceful? I'm asking the city not just to support a ceasefire resolution, but to stand by the many years of humanitarian efforts that will follow this war, to rebuild, feed, house, provide healthcare for the families, schools and hospitals that have been destroyed. Historically, cities like ours have taken moral stands on apartheid, war and genocide. Choosing to say nothing, moving forward sets a bad precedent and take note that our partners in our sister cities program, who was here earlier today, and the Olympic committees may see future partnerships a sour taste. There's nothing that a sanctuary city designation could fix if you go down this road of silencing the stories of our immigrant and refugee families. I urge you reject this resolution and not bring it back. Acknowledge the humanitarian crisis, call for a ceasefire and demand access of food, water and medicine.
Thank you.
The next five people are Ronald Davis, Taylor Vivanico, Edward Walkovitz, Daryl Mente, Ali Levy. So next is Ronald Davis.
I too oppose this resolution and hope that the city council will reconsider it and talk carefully about it and listen to your constituents. It's not time to move in a new direction. You know, I was thinking when I read this resolution, I wonder what would Pope Francis have said about it? What would Pope Leo have said about it? And then I realized, well, you know, they already spoke about this when they rebuked Vice President Vance very recently. Because our vice president said that we should not be concerned with anything but our neighbors, with our immediate constituency. We should not be concerned about the immorality that's going on in the world. We should not speak about it. It reminds me a little bit of what the white citizens councils used to pass resolutions in cities in Mississippi to limit what black people who were advocating for the vote could speak about at the city councils. It's almost word for word, a lot of peace, a lot of harmony, a lot of brotherhood, but you must not speak. I think that Leo and Francis would say not speaking about the genocide that's going on in Israel is not only immoral, it's probably a sin. Thank you.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Thank you. I would just like to ask the city council to vote no on A3, on motion A3. I think, I don't really think it makes sense for the city council to try to put limits on what it can or can't do, especially in this way. I think there have been a lot of people who have been coming to Culver City City Council, you know, over and over again, as part of their first amendment right of free speech, as part of, you know, the representation, as part of democracy, you know, making their voice heard. I've been consistently asking the city council to bring forward a ceasefire resolution. We've held rallies in Culver City, we've held events in Culver City, we've held vigils in Culver City over and over and over again to try to honor the martyrs in Palestine. And, you know, the city council has kind of stood by and did nothing, has done nothing. People have met with city council members over and over again and the city council has sat by and done nothing. Repeatedly, people have been asking for the ceasefire motion. And now it seems that you all have gotten tired of the people coming to ask for this motion, which is just, really just a recognition of the murders and the killings as something that's wrong, morally wrong, morally unjust. And yet the city council has just sat by and done nothing. And as you've gotten tired of it, you've decided to just try and silence the people who have come forward asking for the ceasefire motion. And, you know, really it's an erosion of rights and it's erosion of civic engagement. And, you know, that's kind of the foundation of democracy really is being able to voice our opinions and voice our concerns. And I think this erosion is just a further degradation into fascism and, you know, the city council should vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
At the beginning of every council meeting, the city clerk reads from the agenda, a statement that says or that requests the community to limit its comments to those matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Notwithstanding that admonition, in October of 2023, this council adopted a resolution expressing solidarity with the state of Israel, which is clearly by any metric beyond the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Now, as much as I may agree with that resolution, I think it is not appropriate for this body, whose job it is to do the business of the city, to do that. I think that you would be better served if you would stay within the confines of what it is you were elected to do, and that is maintain the public health, safety and welfare of the community. Now, given the mess we're in and the fact that there was this resolution in October of 2023, it stands to reason that people would, for the next countless months, come before you and request that the people of Palestine be given equal dignity in Gaza. And at this point in time, my recommendation to you all is that you first adopt a resolution that supports a ceasefire in Gaza and secondly, adopt a resolution that basically limits future council comments to those matters that are within its subject matter jurisdiction.
Daryl Mente.
Well, good evening, members of council. I wear a number of hats in this town, but I'm not wearing any now, which is why you can see my bald spot. This has been a difficult resolution for me to think about and talk about. I want to thank you for bringing this forward and I hope that you will adopt it. We've heard a lot tonight, I'm sure we'll keep hearing more. These are issues that are much in dispute around the world and here. And these are issues that this body doesn't really have the competence to address, no offense to any of you, but it's a lot of work. This council is not empowered to make foreign policy and it's going to make a mess of it if it tries. We're not supposed to use our city council processes to gin up support for what are controversial foreign policy positions that may be at odds with the State Department. More importantly, we as citizens shouldn't be using city resolutions to try to score points against our neighbors on issues that we know are inflammatory. We shouldn't be engaging in rhetorical battles where the prize would be a statement that would alienate half the city. We're not supposed to bring the warfare home. When the city speaks, it really should be about things that bring us together. And I think this resolution actually does a good job of that. So I do support this resolution. I may be the only voice here tonight, but I think it's a good thing to be brought forward. And I thank Councilman McMoRan for asking to agendize it and the rest of the staff for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Ali Levine.
Let there be no equivocation. Textbook genocide is not an international conflict. My name is Ali Levy. I'm a homeowner in Foxes Culver City. I'm also a citizen of both the co-genocidal settler colonial projects otherwise known as Israel and the United States. So I looked at the proposed resolution fairly didactically and after puking, I kind of asked myself a set of questions quite rhetorically. One, why this resolution at all? Two, why this resolution now? Then I started wondering, what's more pathetic? The resolution itself or me standing in front of you, asking you to toss it out like the piece of garbage that it is? After all, everyone here knows that the resolution is nothing but a sinister ploy to silence speech of a particular content, and we know exactly what I mean by particular content, under the guise of a certain lack of subject matter jurisdiction on the grounds of quote unquote, oh, international conflict. The only thing that would actually be more pathetic than all of that I just mentioned is for the council to go ahead and pass this resolution. One, they would not even muster even threshold constitutionality. So what's going to be next? Will the council be physically plucking us out of the, out of the meeting so as to suppress our speech? Oops, I forgot. Our federal branches are already doing a good job on the plucking.
The next five people will be James Richardson, Kathy Brown, Jasmine Delgado, Jamie Wallace and Sam A. So next up is James Richardson.
I wasn't really able to read through this resolution and it's a very complex subject. And I'm going to side with what all the constituents here are saying, but it's very difficult to have some pieces of yourself across the world and not be affected by it. And you're powerless to do anything about that. The issues here is language and authority. And so I don't put it against you for not having the authority to do anything physically there, but the language, I think, is what everyone is really disappointed with. It would have been very simple to just say ceasefire and let all the context about the surrounding war between Israel and Palestine, really, we can start working on that later because it's very convoluted. You can't just condemn one and then don't really look at the other side, what's going on on that end. There's real, there's real safety measures, not just, you know, happening internationally, but it's happening here in this very country. And it's, you know, some voices don't even have the privilege to speak without being harmed. And it's not just happening here in Culver City, it's across this country, it's in my own home city in Chicago where I fled from. And so, yes, I'm going to side with them and say we may need to think over about a resolution that actually uses the word ceasefire because too many people are shooting at each other, whether it's words or it's with physical guns or we're talking nires. But you can't really not think about the world and still not think there's no war going on in your own home, in your own heart. That's all.
Finally, I'm coming to speak about the right thing tonight, but I just want to add my voice as well to say I'm opposed to this resolution. I urge you to please vote against it. It's, it's really important that the city council is able to speak up and weigh in and, and I really support that there be a resolution support of a ceasefire. And this is something that many towns and cities have done across the country. So it seems that this is something that Culver City should stand up and do. And, you know, you think of the expression, the common expression of, you know, think globally, but you act locally. And this is something that we need to do. So I encourage you to do that. I just want to mention one other issue that got brought up earlier this evening and I wasn't able to test by before in terms of the support of the Jubalo Village. That's, I'm really, really happy that the council is supporting that and hearing people tonight talking about how, oh, it's going to, you know, take so many resources for so long. And my understanding is that the city has not supported affordable housing, affordable housing project for years. So please stand strong in support of that as well. Thank you.
Next is Jasmine Delgado. I don't see her online. So we're going to move on to Jamie Wallace.
This is an issue that is so incredibly complex, personal, and just, if, if we're going to say a ceasefire in Israel, why aren't we talking about what's going on in Somalia? Are we going to talk about what's going on in Kashmir? I don't think that the city council's job is to make foreign policy. Putin and Netanyahu couldn't give a flying beep about what we say and what we feel. And I'm confused. Why do people keep on saying that they're being silenced? You can still come to council meetings and you can speak. You are not being denied your, your right of free speech. But the city is not equipped. None of you guys are experts in the history, the long and horrible histories of the, of the conflicts, not only in the Middle East, but all around the world. Unless there's something about you guys I don't know, you don't know enough to be able to say, okay, we're going to do X or we're going to speak for Y. It's not your job. Your job is to look after the city. Your employees are working to look after the city all of the time that council members and employees have spent trying to work on this issue to find a resolution that isn't there because they, it does not belong to the city. That's a lot of time, a lot of effort. People keep on speaking to each other, but don't ask the city council to be the one.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Next is Sam A.
Hello, mayor, council members, vice mayor. I don't know why I put you last, I'm sorry. I'm here tonight to urge you to reconsider the current resolution that would essentially stop discussion of international matters in this council. While I acknowledge the desire to focus on local governance, we have to acknowledge that global events affect our communities in very real and personal ways. As an Iranian-American, I have personally felt the direct impact of international crises through increased Islamophobia and anti-Asian hate in Culver City. Global events don't just stay abroad, but rather they arrive in our streets, our schools, newspaper and city at large, and I know I'm not alone. Silencing conversations about Silencing conversations about global events sends a message that our lived experiences shaped locally and internationally are not welcome in civic dialogue. That's not democracy. We must be able to speak about how international events and humanitarian crises affect us here at home. When our city allows space for us to engage in these discussions, we promote compassion and resilience. I ask you to uphold that space, not just for me, but for all of our city's residents whose lives are shaped by more than just our borders. Thank you.
The last three speakers are So Us, Jeff Cooper, and Anthony Higgins. So Us.
I oppose this resolution. This resolution really shows where you stand with certain people in the community. How can those that have family in Palestine feel safe in a city where now not only have you done so much to deter any decision of supporting a ceasefire, you're basically telling them, we don't want to hear about the genocide of your people, your family, that everyone in the United States is funding with our tax dollars. There's worry about time and funds being spent wisely. We've had to come back multiple times because you all delayed any actual decision you would have to make about supporting a ceasefire, and then had us go through hoops like going to the Equity and Human Advisory Committee to make a community conversation. We did all those things. Every step of the way, you had different ways to delay for yourselves actually making a decision and having accountability for that decision. These were your choices because every time we said we would be back, we come back. If you want to pass this bill that gives a statement that Culver City is for peace prevailing for all, you have a funny way of showing that. For almost a full year, we've been asking for a ceasefire resolution, which I'd say would be the start of even talking about peace prevailing for all. Or honestly, you should have just said that Culver City is for peace prevailing for some. If for whatever reason you actually choose to continue with this resolution, then in the next upcoming meetings, we better see on the agenda a rescinding of the resolutions from October 23rd, standing in solidarity with Israel, and from February 24th condemning Russia's attack on Ukraine, since these are international concerns and should no longer be a resolution under Culver City, since this new resolution would take care of all the stances Culver City has for international conflict. There can be no peace if there's oppression.
I do not see him online. So then the last person is Anthony Higgins.
Yeah, hello, Anthony Higgins. Look, this is an issue that rises above race or religion and gets right down to the core of who you are as a human being. What is happening today in Gaza is genocide. It's starvation as a weapon of war. It's the elimination of 90% of the hospitals. It's suffering on a huge scale. You have an obligation as a human being to do what you can with what you can have now, what you can with what you have now, and now you can speak out for a ceasefire. It's insane that the city would support resolutions on Ukraine or on October 7th, as horrific as that was, and not speak out against the genocide, the 15,000 dead children, the 15,000 dead women, innocents. You have an opportunity to do something. It may be small, but it's time for a ceasefire resolution, and I thank you for your time.
That was our final speaker.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to the speakers. Councilman Fish.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you to the community members who joined us tonight to share your feelings on this matter. Just want to start by saying I believe my colleagues care deeply about our city and about reducing harm in the world, and I supported actually having this conversation because I believed that the concept was put forth in good faith with the goal of putting some structure in place for something that has clearly in the past been really prone to bias, which is this question of who gets support from the city and when and for what reasons. And also, after seeing the language proposed here and hearing from our community, I too am struggling with the process and the message that this resolution would send. So for months, as we've talked about, community members in Culver City, many of whom have family directly impacted or have just been watching the news and, you know, and feeling distressed by it for obvious reasons, you know, have come to this chamber asking many times for us to speak up, and now, months later, we have a resolution before us that wasn't shaped with those same voices at the table. And to some, it might feel like an attempt to sidestep that real, very specific moral questions that our community has been raising for us. So I think, you know, as written, this risks making folks feel more silenced at a time when speaking out is already dangerous for people. We're seeing people across the country arrested, doxxed, fired, and physically harmed for protesting the violence in Gaza. Students are being abducted off the street. People are being put in real danger for demanding peace. And this resolution, I don't think meets that moment yet, at least. It feels disconnected from the urgency and the risk that many are living with. And, you know, as noted, we've passed resolutions in support of Ukraine, in support of Israel, both brought forward very quickly without community input and passed without hesitation, so I don't want to double down on those errors again. And when it came time to even consider that call for a ceasefire, which hundreds of cities have also passed, we delayed that, and now, you know, we're offering something that's more vague and symbolic in its place. So this resolution, it says Culver City supports peace and diplomacy, but what does that look like in practice? What responsibilities does that carry for us? So, you know, to me, it's very centering to remember that this is not just an international conflict, it's one that's being funded by us, the United States. Billions of taxpayer dollars are funding weapons to wipe out entire communities while ours go without housing, health care, and education, and I think our residents have a right to question this and ask that we take meaningful actions towards contributing to peace. So, you know, in the same way that we advocate at the federal level for transportation funding or at the state level for housing policies that benefit us, I think we also, if we choose to, we could have a role to play in naming where public resources are going and who is being harmed. We might be a small city, but our values do not stop at our borders. So I think if we are serious about standing for peace, we can take real steps to make sure that our actions match the words in that resolution. We could examine where our city dollars go, for example, whether through investments, contracts, or procurement policies. We could protect residents who are at great risk of being targeted for speaking out, and we could continue to make more space for education, community dialogue, and solidarity work here, just like we did with the Courageous Conversations event, which I was really grateful for the time that went into that and the support from this council. So I think if we want to explore a statement on war and peace, I'd love to refer this item to our Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee, where it could be shaped with public input rooted in community needs and developed into something more actionable and meaningful. So, you know, if we're gonna make a statement, I want it to count, and I would love for it to be grounded in substantive action, because people in our community are watching and they're grieving, and they're speaking out, and they're asking us to do more, and they're asking us to show that even in a small city like ours, we have the courage to stand on our principles and involve the community in taking meaningful action. And so I'll end it there, and again, I really appreciate the work that's gone into this with staff. I appreciate this conversation. I appreciate my colleagues for bringing it forth because it is an important conversation, and I truly believe the intent here is to make some kind of sense of what has been an inequitable process clearly in the past of when we offer support. So thank you. I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you to staff and community members who spoke this evening. So my intention with bringing this item back was really reflective over the past, I guess, couple of, a little over a year now, I guess. And it comes from just the identities that I hold. I come from a community that, to this day, fights to be treated fairly in this country and has for the past 400-plus years, and I recognize and hold very dearly that there are countless international conflicts and some that impact those who I am in very deep relationship with and who are deeply impacted by, that reflect some of the comments in this room and some that were not lifted up in this room this evening. And I do just want to be really clear that unless I'm missing, I just want to be clear that I didn't, under my read, I didn't see this resolution as limiting public comments from anyone, and just to be clear that no current council can bind the decision of future councils, otherwise we'd probably still be a sundown city. So, you know, that's just not how our processes work. And I didn't, you know, I included some data about just the loss of life that is collectively happening, but that's not really important. It is important just to hold the collective grief that is in this space, that is outside of this space, and I wanted to lift that up because when I lifted up the fact that there are many conflicts happening that are impacting specifically those in the black communities, I just want to sort of name that. And I was told very clearly by neighbors that, well, those people don't live here, so we don't have to be worried about them. And I'll never forget what that feels like to, and, you know, people might not believe that that is what was said. I have no reason to lie, and again, I am sitting in honor and respect of everything that has been brought up, but that feeling is very salient. So my intention, again, was not to minimize the grief or to minimize the loss of life that continues to happen. What my intention was to ensure that in our community, that we attempt to value the life of all of our folks and that we live into building a community where we can have peace, where we can have more equity, and where we can have accountability, and hopefully in some ways try to model that. And of course, we fall short all the time, but, you know, I don't get up and come here without, you know, trying to live out those values daily. And so, you know, again, I started with my intention, and I want to be clear that I don't feel that this is a statement on free speech, and definitely particularly in this moment, it is incredibly important for folks to speak very clearly without, you know, we want to make sure that folks have the right to do that. I do think it is important that we, and I was grateful to bring forward the hate speech and grateful for support from Iraq with that. And I don't impose community input in this process, and if folks, if colleagues feel like it should have a more robust process, I'm open to that, but I do, you know, there is a lot of loss of life happening, and I worry that when some voices are lifted up, they're almost never, you know, reflective of the dire, dire loss and disproportionality, not only that we see in the United States, but it is reflected globally. So that was my concern as a black woman, as a black mom, that when we lift up some voices, they almost never are black voices or reflective of the loss of black people. Particularly, I lift up a lot police violence, which continues to happen in the United States without refraining, which is why I lifted up Tyree Nichols' family at the beginning of my community announcements. So, you know, I hope that we can move forward and see the humanity in one another. I'm open to continuing to refine this, but the goal again is that we are lifting up, you know, our humanity to move forward as a community, because there's, you know, it's not oppression Olympics, no one gets an award for, you know, suffering the most, and, you know, I don't say that, you know, in a callous manner. But again, you know, the intention was to ensure that we could lift up these values that we share and really focus on the work of, you know, supporting more housing, supporting more transit, supporting more sustainability in our community, things that we actually can have a direct impact on. And we meet, you know, these meetings, mayor year was like this, and we get a lot done, but we also, there's a lot on the docket. So, and again, I don't say that to minimize this issue in comparison to others, but just to sort of lift up what we have agency and control over and what we can actually have an impact on in a meaningful way. So again, I'm open to this, receiving more community input, but I do hope that the intention in elevating, you know, this call for affirming peace, again, was heard and hopefully felt in the way that it was intended. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, staff, for preparing this show and, John, thank you both. You know, it's, for me, it's all in the timing. Does this resolution preclude anybody from coming to council and sharing their worries, concerns? No, it doesn't. However, after talking to some community members today, they sort of illuminated certain things to me that I hadn't really thought about from the perspective of some of these individuals speaking this evening. And it is really about the optics and the timing. This group has been coming to council for, good Lord's, how long, and kept us here all night long, which is fine. That's what we're up here for, for a ceasefire resolution, and a lot thought we were sending you or jumping through hoops, and we did want to get it right. And one of the commenters said that we lacked the confidence, Daryl Menfee or what, that the competence, and we don't, we just don't have the knowledge or the competence to come up with something really meaningful, and it's a complex, complex item. You know, that being said, though, after speaking to some community members, maybe really look at it in a different perspective where you see this resolution now, and the first thing that comes to mind is, well, our council doesn't give a, about our feelings. They're trying to censor us, trying to quiet us, and I get it. And to me, looking at it initially, I'm like, this is great, you know, it's sort of, sort of a catch-all and sort of feels good, but after really talking to some members and really then reading this with that sort of lens of your perspectives, gave it different light altogether. You know, we're a diverse community, and we want to respect the diverse perspectives of our residents and firm commitment to fostering inclusive dialogue and mutual understanding among community members impacted by global events. When this issue first came through, I did want to create a dialogue. I think myself and the mayor at the time were the only ones that really entertained passing this forward, at least to continue the dialogue. Whether I agreed with the ceasefire resolution or not, it had nothing to do with it, but I think, I think everything starts with a dialogue. Once we tell our community members, well, your dialogue is no longer welcome here, that's when we become, that's when, I think, problems really start happening. Encouraging dialogue and supporting all efforts to bring about a peaceful resolution of disputes should be the goal, and that should be the ultimate goal, is encouraging dialogue, listening to others' differences, whether I agree with them or not, but it's part of the process. differences, whether I agree with them or not, but it's part of the process. And then we come to the question of peace. You know, who really knows what peace means? Is it subjective? Is it more than just the absence of war or violence? Is it a condition in which individuals, communities, and nations experience safety, justice, dignity, and well-being? In short, peace is both a process and a goal, something we build through relationships, policies, and values that promote dignity, equity, and cooperation. This is the product of the commitment and the follow-through to support for the principles of peaceful resolution of disputes. The resolutions speak to the process of encouraging dialogue, leading to the peaceful resolution of disputes, not to peace, whatever that means. So, I encourage dialogue. I think in a community like this, where it is a small community, we all are neighbors, dialogue is, I think, so much more of a part of where we should be at as opposed to I'm right, you're wrong, and there is no in-between. It's all about dialogue. I get the resolution, but I can't support it the way it's written. And I just want to, you know, thank some of the community members that took the time to reach out to me and share their perspectives. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Thank you to staff and thanks to everyone who's spoken. Thanks to Mr. Davis, who brought up the Pope. I've worked at a Catholic institution for the past 20 years, and I've been thinking about the Pope and the new Pope. There's been a shift in leadership, and I'm speaking this not through a religious lens, but just through the lens of a new leader on the world stage. But also, former Pope Francis, he did say that the global conflicts affecting so many people around the world equate to a Third World War and pieces. The new Pope took this further. It was to discuss what he said about Ukraine and Gaza. He also talked about lasting peace between India and Pakistan, Sudan, Lebanon. He also talked about Democratic Republic in Congo to Myanmar. So, the suffering and injustice around the world is unfathomable and heartbreaking. And I see the pain in our community. I hear the anger and I share the outrage at injustice and loss of life, especially when it's disproportionately inflicted on marginalized communities. And that pain is real. And expressing compassion and standing up for human rights can and should be done, and many of us do in our personal and organizational capacities. It's crucial to protect free speech and due process. And I hope that we, as individuals, use our platforms to advocate as we feel called. You know, we're choosing to direct our collective efforts towards the things we can shape, a stronger civic fabric, inclusive public spaces, and policies rooted in care and equity. So, yes, we should acknowledge the broader world we live in. Many in our community are directly affected by global conflicts and atrocities emotionally, spiritually, and through the ties of family or identity. This resolution could make space for that pain while clarifying the reality that the role of a city is to support peace through local action. So, we can be asking ourselves, how can we foster intercultural understanding in our neighborhoods? How are we building systems that will resolve conflict without harm? How are we using our platforms to encourage dialogue over division? It's also opportunity to acknowledge that there are always going to be international conflicts that put our communities at odds and that it's the city's position that we take a moral stance on all conflicts when it comes to the cost of human life, whether it be in Palestine, Israel, Central, or East Asia, Africa, or any other country, where the U.S. should step in and use diplomacy. And with a standard city policy would therefore apply to every conflict. So, I don't think tonight's about closing the door on global awareness. I think it's about keeping the door open to effective, inclusive, local governance. If it's the decision of this body that we think that, you know, we should open the process up to the entire community and we can model a peaceful way to craft this resolution in a more meaningful way, I am open to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you to my colleagues and thanks to all the input we received tonight. Thanks to staff. I remember when I was just a private citizen here, not on council, and topics like this would come up and I'd go, God, why are you guys dealing, why are they dealing with this? This is not, you know, what I voted for. I voted for to, you know, deal with certain things. And I, and what they are, I Googled, what is the purpose of a city council? And in order, it was lawmaking, budgeting, policymaking, oversight, setting goals, contract negotiation, land use planning, tax levies, approving city manager and other appointments, you know, all kind of mundane and boring stuff, but it's what, those are the things that keep the city running. As Mr. Menfe mentioned, I'm going to paraphrase, but I certainly, I don't feel capable of rendering resolutions. And I know that we did. I guess it was on October 23rd, but it was about October 7th. And I know with Ukraine, we did as well. And that was pretty early in my tenure here, and I was just kind of in shock of those very instant moments, whereas this is an ongoing issue that everyone's speaking to here. I know that there's history behind both of those, those issues that go back decades, if not centuries. But I, I hope my colleagues do the same as I, but I know that I make a lot of effort to try to get things right and listen to everyone who reaches out to me. That's a lot of people. And I told one of the folks who spoke tonight, who's a neighbor of mine, back when I was initially asked directly to consider this, and I remember saying, this is going to take up a lot of time. And it's going to take away from, you know, all the other stuff. And I did a, you know, quick calculation. I'm sure I forgot things, but I've spent over 100 hours talking with community members about this. And I, I've sat in the living rooms of both sides of the argument. And I've seen tears, I've heard frustrations, I've probably lost friends over, you know, my openness, because I don't understand each person's personal history, the history of this issue. And I will hear one's, one person's personal story, and then I'll go to a person on the other side of the argument, and they'll share their personal story. And if I agree with the, their demands, the demands of one community on this, it's going to be in direct opposition and create fear and uneasiness from those and the other, and the same in the opposite direction. It's, it's so complex. And it's not, I'm not equipped, nor did I run, on dealing with these issues. And it's funny, I remember, I've kind of joked here. I've been to more, I'm a Christian, and I'm a member of Grace Lutheran Church. I've been to more services at the mosque and at Temple Akiba than I have at my own church in the past two years. And I did go to church for Christmas last year. And my kids, or my daughter's church up in Colorado, and the pastor said something that was really great. I'm paraphrasing from memory, but, you know, he noted that shalom and salam, you know, from two different peoples, means basically the same thing, peace. And, you know, he said, peace isn't the absence of war, it's an ongoing effort to work together to support and uplift one another. And I think that that's really critical, and we really tried to do that with that community conversation. Someone said that it was, that was conditional for a ceasefire resolution. I think that that's, we didn't say that. I think that that was an important step in an ongoing conversation that we need to have. And if we're serious about this, and if it's not just a, you know, a performative act to do anything here, it's to continue dialogue, like my colleague said. You can do a proclamation and then walk away, and what's the meaning of it, really? You know? So...
Would you have dialogue? Would you have dialogue about the Holocaust? Would you be talking about the complexity of the Holocaust?
Sir, I appreciate your words, but the time for the public to speak has passed. If you want to talk to me afterwards, we can do that?
Yeah, I'd love to.
But I do want you to remember, I'm not, I'm not kidding, 100 hours, over, well over, outside of this chamber, I've spent on this topic. So, I do think we need to do a deeper dive on this. I've had feedback from both communities on this, and this is clearly not ready for passage. I think it's, Iraq definitely to get some feedback there, but it should be also in the, you know, policy subcommittee meeting, you know, conversation, because this is policy. Or is it government? What's that subcommittee called?
City Council Policy.
Yeah, this is a policy.
No, I think you're referring to, are you referring to the city governance subcommittee?
Governance Subcommittee. But to have more thought put into this. It sounds as though, I think all five of us feel like it's not ready for passage, and it needs to be reviewed and feedback given to it. So, I'm, I'm in favor of that, if we want to move forward with that.
I'm in favor of that suggestion. You know, with, with the caveat of if it doesn't get, if the Iraq recommends not pursuing it, then we can, it doesn't have to come back to council. Or if it comes back to council, it could come back with Iraq's recommendation, whether as amended or not as amended. But I'm curious if we could, in that direction to go to Iraq, ask for the statement to be centered around the experience of our Palestinian neighbors and Arab-American neighbors and our neighbors who are, just centered around that experience and what it has been like to not be seen and whether that, and consider a ceasefire resolution. I'm, I'm just curious if we have support to, in the same way that we had issued these resolutions in the past, if we can ask for specific, for a resolution specifically centering just that, that experience that has not been acknowledged here, that our community's asking for.
I, my, my problem is that I've, I've gone through that conversation with folks in the community that, you know, this gentleman sitting in the front row is going to scoff, but I have to take, I have to take other people's feelings with the same weight as feelings of yours. And I've been told prior ceasefire propositions that have been publicly distributed make those in, some in the Jewish community feel unsafe, feel as though, just all kinds of problems with it. And it's, so, I, it's problematic. And, and I know that those folks don't feel safe coming in this room. I, they don't come here, they don't talk, and they're for fear of whatever it is that they're afraid of. But they tell me that. And when I see someone laugh at a comment like that, they're clearly not ready for dialogue.
Because you will get mistalked, because it's really...
Okay. Sounds...
And you're not here to make somebody not feel comfortable. That's not your job. We elected you to do a job.
Sir, we don't, we don't do back and forth right here. So, I, I think it needs to be looked at under the guise of, for the future, for all world That's not what we were elected for. It's not what we were elected for, to render on that. And we did it in the past, yeah. And I don't think that we should have. And we need to focus on these things that I listed. That's my take.
Mayor, so, is the direction to, so I just want to sort of, there was a couple of sort of limiting language in some of the direction with just like both sides. So, I kind of want to elevate again the concern of the fact that there are a lot of, well, not a lot, but many international conflicts happening right now that are also impacting neighbors as well. And, you know, I guess the concern with the specifics, or if we list out specific groups, it ties it to this point in time, it would require, you know, so, that's the...
I agree. I don't want to go there.
Yeah. So, so the Iraq and the policy subcommittee are identified as the spaces that it would make sense to attend, to go to?
Governance, right.
I mean, it's, it's up to the city council, but I was just getting the impression that you were speaking, because you were looking down this direction. So, I was thinking you were speaking about the governance subcommittee, of which council members, McMoran and Fish, are members.
It should probably be policy, right?
Well, the policy subcommittee, the ad hoc policy subcommittee, its scope was initially to review all of the existing council policies. I don't necessarily, I mean, it's completely up to the council. I just, it doesn't seem like any new issue that comes up would necessarily go to them.
Okay.
But if the city council directs that, then, you know, that's what it'll be. It is an ad hoc subcommittee, though, so I just, we need to be cautious about expanding its scope too much beyond its initial scope, whereas the governance subcommittee is a-standing. But again, city, it's, you know, the city council's decision.
I'd like it to go where it makes the most sense, so. And that, that way, there's more dialogue in the, in the development of it, whereas Ms. Wolf, I see you're getting ready to say something.
Oh, no, this is very helpful, so I'm listening for direction, if you want to synthesize that, or if you're ready to.
I'll just suggest, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I was going to make one more option, just to advise the council, one more option, although it would have to come back. But one other option would be to create an ad hoc subcommittee specifically for this discussion and this resolution and policy discussion and resolution. Just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Counselor Fish?
Yeah, I just, I caution, I just want to put a word of caution about continuing to, if we're not finding support for the concept, to continue trying to workshop it, if we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole, because I'm concerned about a resolution that does not actually have actionable items towards supporting peace and supporting, supporting the things that the resolution purports to support. So, that's, that's what I'm concerned with, is if, if it's just words on a page, but no actionable ways the city can better, because again, this is, this is United States policy. This is not something, yes, it's happening around the world, but it's happening with the support of our government, of our federal government. So, if it's not something that this want, that, you know, this body wants to take on, I think it's best to, to not give that direction.
I think it's best to, to not give that direction, at least from my perspective. But if my colleagues really want the resolution, I'm, then perhaps the Iraq should take this on. I don't know if it's the best fit for the governance committee. I would love to hear what the Iraq thinks, because it's not really, I think, what we appear are thinking and feeling. I think it really needs to be from the community, if that's the direction. But if it's just a resolution, but with no meaningful actionable steps towards supporting peace in other, it can be beyond Gaza, right? It can be, as we've discussed, like in other areas. Then I think it, I would advise against, you know, continuing, continuing it. That's my, my last piece. Thank you.
Okay, does someone want to present a motion?
Sure, I will present a motion to send this resolution to our Iraq and, and if possible, the policy subcommittee, if not possible, then just to Iraq, with seeking their input. That might also include, again, lifting up the intention of, of the resolution. We can also, I didn't hear consensus about this, but people can say if they don't, but if they're, if we can tie in some actionable steps or programming. I think the HR team is involved with Iraq, so they would have some insight if there would be additional things coming down the line. Again, probably wouldn't be good to put it in resolution language, but again, if there were some sort of collaboration between HR and the equity team in this resolution to ensure that it's not just words, that it is some sort of wrapped up with programming and education and dialogue that has been lifted up by, I think, most of my colleagues this evening, so that there is some sort of a programming piece to go along with the resolution. Does anyone have any questions or amendments to that?
At what cost are we talking? Do we have to now allocate money aside for this? I mean, I just don't understand, we want to create all these new programs and, and things to go with it when we're running into a structural deficit. Make no sense. Okay.
Budget is a different conversation, but Iraq is already staffed.
And when you ask for programming, it's not a conversation.
Councilmember, I'm still speaking. Come on, I'm still speaking. But you just interjected, so let's please have respect for one another, respect for the office, respect for the community. I was trying to address your budgetary concerns. So I'm lifting up the fact that Iraq is staffed by HR already. I recognize that they do have a work plan. We do have some budgetary allocations for the United versus Hate Week. There are some allocations for Courageous Conversations that could be potentially repurposed into some of this actionable next steps. Again, the goal is to try to meet our community where they are and ensure that we're doing all that we can with the powers that we have to, you know, to support our community. So I hope that addresses your deficit concern, because what we're suggesting, or what I am suggesting in this moment, is not additional programming, but it is just to ensure that what we are already doing is meeting the current needs of our community. And I think that that addresses some of what councilmember Fish, but maybe not lifted up.
No, it does. I think, and if it goes to Iraq and the, and the consensus from that body is, you know, something like this might not be the next, like, this resolution might not be the next stage. We need to do, you know, like the programming you mentioned instead or something like that. Like, is that a conversation we can hear too? Or is that something you'd be open to is?
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
Just like if the, if what Iraq says to us is, hey, this resolution, we're not, you know, it's doing more harm than good, let's continue and do these types of programming, or let's do this type of educational opportunity. Is that something, is that a recommendation that we could hear in this body and like consider?
I think, let's, Iraq's going to work on the request. And if they have an alternative request, that's certainly within their power to, to offer.
Yeah, I just want it to be an option for them to consider, whether a resolution is even the right move.
I, we're giving the directions to, my understanding of the direction is to make that effort.
Okay, great. I just want their input on it as a whole as well, not just like, how do we make this good? But what do you think of the concept? How does it work? How does it serve the community?
Okay. Shelley.
No, I just want to thank the city council for, and the community that's here today and the entire community for their thoughtfulness on this very serious and upsetting issue to many people. And I appreciate the thought that's gone into this. And I'm taking all the feedback here. And hopefully, I want to make sure that I capture the right direction tonight. So I'm going to be selfish and ask for just a restatement of what you would like, unless the city attorney or city manager understand.
I recommend if councilmember McMoran, who made the motion, is comfortable with it, that the motion is per her earlier statement on the record, because it was pretty detailed. So I don't, I don't know that you want to repeat that back, councilmember McMoran. We can, we can get it from the record if needed.
Yeah, because I didn't write it down.
Yeah, so.
But we can go back.
It would be the councilmember McMoran's motion per, per the record, per her statement on the record.
And just, it did, it acknowledged some of councilmember Fish's concerns. So as long as we have all that in there, I think that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need a repeat of the motion, language from staff or no?
We'd have to go back to the record, right?
Okay.
Can you repeat it back?
I have the Cliff Notes version, so.
I just want to know what we're voting on. Thank you, sir.
So the motion was to send the resolution to Iraq and if possible, the policy subcommittee seeking their input and to include lifting the intention of the resolution and to include actionable next steps or programming, collaboration between HR and Iraq, to include education and dialogue in the programming piece to go along with the resolution, to meet the community where they are. Not sure if you missed anything.
I think for me, the piece that I was hoping to just include in there is just, I want input from the community on the resolution. That's what I'm hoping for. I don't know if my, if my colleagues would support that, but I just want to know what the community feels about the resolution.
And, I'm sorry, did you say something about like the overall?
Just that, just, just input from community members on this proposed resolution, so we can decide whether it's something that the city should pursue or not. I just want to hear from our community.
So Amy, like at a Iraq meeting or?
Yeah, what, what does the Iraq, what are their takeaways from, from this resolution? How do they feel? Do they feel it's serving the community? Do they feel that if it were worded differently, it would serve the community? If it, I, I'm, I'm curious. Because I'm, I'm just not convinced that the resolution itself is, is going to, is going to do what it purports to, so that's why I'm asking for that. But if that's not the motion, that's okay as well. Just remove that from the motion, but that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, I'd like the background on the resolution and the, clearly the text of the resolution that was presented today, so they have context and, and the reason behind it. And I know Counselor Rivera was concerned about mandating or directing the scheduling of future programming. But, so I don't think that's a direct request. I think Counselor McMoran came back on that a little bit in the sense that it, they do have to build their work plan and that's things that they can consider. But it's not a mandate to create programming out of it. Is that clear? Yeah.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Quick question, what happened the first time when we sent this to Iraq? I mean, how do we, I just want to send you, a lot of the comments were about the hoops that we made them jump through by going back and forth to Iraq. And we're, we're here again sending it back to Iraq?
Well, this is for this, this particular resolution.
Okay.
I just, I just want to be sure that. Sorry, if, if, if the only people that show up and give their community input is from a particular community, it's going to be, it's going to have a, you know, rendered a certain way. So it's got to be a balanced feedback, so.
Can you read it back one more time, city clerk?
Alrighty, so the motion was to send the resolution to Iraq and if possible, the policy subcommittee seeking their input to include lifting the intention of the resolution and include actionable next steps or programming, collaboration between HR and Iraq, and it should include education and dialogue, a programming piece to go along with the resolution to meet the community where they are, input from the community on the proposed resolution, on if the resolution should pass or not, or Iraq's takeaways. What are Iraq's takeaways from the resolution? And then background on the resolution and the text of the resolution and the reason behind it. And a note that says Iraq is not mandated to create programming.
Yeah, I would say, like, open to education with the part about the next steps. So, so we're just trying to hear from, from them. And if, if possible, if there could be, now, this might be too much, but a period where folks can provide comment. Because I heard lifted up from the mayor that some neighbors might not feel comfortable coming to meetings, so making sure that there is an opportunity for folks to comment without having to be, I don't know how the, it's been a minute since I've been at Iraq meetings, but, so just making sure that there is an electronic option for feedback, so folks don't have to be in the room to comment. Because sometimes I know folks do have to be in the room, so I don't know how it goes. So hopefully, that could be an accommodation for this as well.
So like a virtual component?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what, city clerk, I'm not sure what you mean by virtual component.
Hybrid meeting.
Oh.
Where folks can speak via Zoom or WebEx.
Okay, if that's the council's direction, that's not typically, it's not within the current policy for, but if that's council's direction, then.
I think that would hopefully reflect some of the concerns lifted up by colleagues this evening in terms of community input, hopefully. I don't know, mayor?
Yeah, if there's a way, through, through email, through electronic, through. You know, is that acceptable in a, in a committee meeting? Community members deliver comments.
They can speak, they, written comments won't be read into the record.
Okay.
They would be received and filed. But if, if the council's directing a hybrid meeting, then the member, members of the public could attend like they do at council.
Let's request that.
Okay. And then I see a motion, it looks like it was moved by Counselor Rivera. Was that a mistake? All right. Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember McMoran and a second, looking for a second. All right, I have a motion by Councilmember McMoran, second from Mayor O'Brien to direct staff. You may begin voting. That motion passes four A's and one no from Counselor Member Vera.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any speakers for items on the agenda?
Currently have three speakers.
Okay.
The first is Malik Mahmood. And I'm not seeing him online. Moving on, Maria Beg.
Hi, good evening. Sorry I missed the first round of public comments, but thank you for allowing me to speak now. And I know you probably feel as if I've taken up a lot of your time, but since yesterday was Mother's Day, I wanted to read this poem that was written by Jenna Mathri, "To the Mothers of Gaza." "To the mothers of Gaza, I have sat with this for weeks, wondering how to even start a letter that's supposed to say I'm sorry and thank you at the same time, all of which feels so trivial and selfish. So I guess I'll start with the selfish part first. To every mother in Gaza, thank you. Thank you for showing the world what the strength of a mother truly looks like. Thank you for showing this world what mothers are capable of. You birthed in tents with no anesthesia. You walked into exile freshly postpartum. You fed babies when there was nothing for you to eat. You've shown this world what it means to be a mother. And now for the trivial, to every mother in Gaza, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for the way we've allowed this world to violently take away your children, unable to stop it yet. I'm sorry that you were chosen to be the ones to bring down a colossal empire with your tiny little humans on the front lines. I'm sorry that I'm sorry will never be enough. And I'm sorry that I said thank you because I know you never asked for any of this. The world is forever changed because of you and we are forever indebted to you for it. We promise to never stop fighting for you because you, we owe you everything and we love you. To every mother in Gaza, we love you." And I feel like even after our discussions that we've had tonight and this whole back and forth of who we're uplifting and who we're not uplifting and who we're here representing and who we're not representing, it really all comes down to, we're representing humanity. And that should be the forefront of every conversation we have. Thank you. Thank you.
Denise Neal?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and community at large. I'm interested in knowing what the status is on our reparations I'm interested in knowing what the status is on our reparations for our community, the African-American community of people who live and work here in Culver City. There are lots of opportunities for us, since DEI is being phased out, to set up some fiscally responsible, financially feasible opportunities for the foundational Black Americans to build their businesses and to contribute to their own reparations. With all we have going on, I'd like to know if there's a way to do set aside and subcontracts, merit contracts for our particular population. I also would like to know what the status is on being able to set up the multi-agency law enforcement substation here at Ivy Station and one in Fox Hills, especially since now LA has their cop force coming out with Bill Scott and all. I'd like to know if we can have dialogue on these things. Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Okay, thank you. Any final comments from my colleagues? Councilman Fish? Councilmember Vera? Wow, great. Can I get a?
I'm sorry, I do have one. It came so fast when you brought it up, I forgot. We're in the middle of, you know, considering this MOU with the New Zealand, Team New Zealand, the New Zealand Olympic Committee. And I know our Olympic Subcommittee with the mayor and the vice mayor is hard at work on this. And we just heard a presentation in the last meeting about it, and we gave some direction to staff. One thing that I know is being talked about is like our ability as a city to recoup the costs of this event, which is, you know, $500,000-plus dollars. If you don't include street closures, if you include street closures, it's more than that. So I was wondering if my colleagues would be open to directing city staff to come up with a cost analysis of how much do we expect to get back from this event, if it were to be held? I just want us to be armed with all the information to make that decision about whether to spend that money. I certainly hope that we're going to recoup that in revenues from folks flocking to Culver City to watch the Olympics, but I would love to arm us with a little more information on that with some kind of analysis.
City Manager has a thought?
I just wanted to share with the council that that's fine if we get that direction, but we don't have that expertise in-house. We'd have to hire a firm to conduct that analysis.
And I know that we're limited here on what we can say, but we're going to need to staff the city up for one way or the other. If New Zealand doesn't come, or if they do, there's going to be a lot of people, so.
Well, I appreciate that, and I agree. I just, the price tag that's being presented to us is specifically focused on this event that's being proposed, so I just want us to have as much information as we can. City Manager, is there any thing that in your experience can be provided?
This isn't on the agenda, so is it, are you requesting to agendize?
Yes.
Something, okay.
Yes.
Then.
And it could be a discussion of how we're going to create that analysis, but that's what I'm asking for. And maybe it's something we can send to the Olympic Subcommittee too. I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we have the information about it.
I'd like to talk about it in a Subcommittee, and then we can go from there.
Okay, does that need three nodding heads to?
Yes, that needs three nodding heads.
Okay.
Three nodding heads from Vice Mayor Puzza, Councilmember Vera, Councilmember McMoran, and Mayor.
That's it, thanks.
Okay, may I have a motion adjourned?
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Vera, seconded by Councilmember McMoran. You may begin voting. That motion passes unanimously. The time is 10:46, and we are adjourned.